Good evening, welcome to January 26, 2017 Planning Board Meeting. The first item on the agenda is a subdivision, Pitbull Realty, continued from some of the previous meetings, for three lot subdivision.
Oh my gosh.
Chuck's here, we have the chairs.
There's a chair over here, or is that posted?
No. No, it's not.
You can share some slightly modest place.
I'll take a chance. Just in case.
And one of the main things at our last meeting was keeping away from the cemetery, and we indeed need to stay 25 feet off cemetery for any construction. And I guess you'd call a driveway construction. So we've moved the driveway 25 feet or more off cemetery, and which puts us about 14 feet off of wetland, which you're not supposed to be that close to it. So we're gonna meet with the zoning board next week and get that part resolved. And we've had an attorney drop an easement, proposed easement, for the cemetery, for the town to get to it. And they're looking at, the town attorney's looking at it now to see how he likes it. I talked to state today about the driveway permit, and after two months, they are looking at it now, and they just had me add a couple words to my note. So they're good with the site distance and everything, and I expect an approval in hand next week. So, and we are partly in the aquifer zone, and I'm showing that line. The, most of the, two-thirds of the property, the western part, is aquifer zone, nice gravelly soil. So, that's it for me.
So your zoning board meeting is?
I think it was the 7th or something like that, it's coming right up.
And this has gone to the Conservation Commission, and I have sent, I have passed their comments on to the zoning board. We'll go over that later. I also, these guys have sent me a language for an easement for the driveway, that if the zoning board approves their variance to 28.9 for the wetland buffers, an easement to allow the town to go back to the cemetery, there seems to be some confusion over the cemetery. Anyway, it's all at Bill Dresscher's.
Did you contact cemetery trustees?
But of course.
Sure.
One's in Florida, one's not around, the other one is working on it, he'll have information tomorrow. The cemetery belongs to the Rogers family, there's evidently only one thing in there, it is not a town cemetery. So according to Dresscher, we may not need any easement to get into it.
Easement should go to the Rogers family, right?
We have to make all the, these guys own it. The Rogers, the Rogers family sold it.
The, most of the deeds for, you know, many, many, many years have excluded it. So, we don't own it, somebody owns it. The town claims it on the tax map, I don't know how the town got it, maybe just because it's a cemetery, the town could say, which isn't a very-
The cemetery trustees will be weighing in on that tomorrow, they promised they had information, and I will get that down to the attorney before you guys have to go to the zoning board.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll have an opinion by then.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking we probably shouldn't, just because make sure that cemetery ownership is straightened out and the variance.
And the easement.
And, well, yeah, that, yeah, it goes with the cemetery ownership, yes. Thought I had another question, I don't see it.
Bill said the easement looked good, the determining factor is do we want it or not?
Well, you're right, if it, if the town doesn't want it, I don't know what we do with easement.
Want that easement, difference back, they don't know that they own it.
Whoever owns it should have the easement.
We don't own it, there are pieces in the world that are just kinda owned by somebody that doesn't know they own it, but we don't. It was excluded in the deed, it describes it and it says excluding the cemetery. So, the heirs of someone-
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, nothing else we could, well-
Easement is a pretty easy one to do.
Yeah, but you gotta grant easement to somebody.
Grant it to the town.
Town may not want it.
Right, exactly.
Because then they're responsible.
There's always responsibility.
Going with ownership. An easement is access, not ownership.
Well, I mean, anytime you own something, whether it's an easement or, I don't know.
Dresscher said he may not want the, may not want the easement. So we're waiting for the answer from him.
We would like to leave an easement to the property. Right now, it just says, because there is an easement to it, but it's not on paper. So whoever is gonna own that land, we wanna show, this is where they're gonna get there. So if the town doesn't wanna claim the land, we're still gonna show a way to get to somebody's land.
Can you create an easement on your property to access another person's property, even if you don't know who owns that other piece?
Pretty hard to grant something to somebody.
I think so. I'm not a lawyer, but-
You're granting an easement to the owner, the unknown owner, as it were.
There's already an easement, we're just, we're defining it in our, but, but that may be a legal question, and I'm a lay-in severe, I don't know everything, but I, I guess attorneys can think about that.
Usually, there's a grantee and a grantor, so.
You're not gonna grant to it.
You're right.
On this property.
If we don't tack it down, someone might go outside the house and people wandering everywhere, I'm getting the cemetery. We, so we just wanna kinda-
Oh, I understand why you wanna, yeah, it's just a question of who's gonna get it. Or it could be-
The heirs of such-and-such a person, I don't know.
The only else I can think of is Note 9, where you say no disturbance in 25 feet of cemetery, I would say per RSA, such-and-such, whatever that RSA is, just so everybody knows why there's no. You gotta go to the zoning board. I have a feeling the cemetery's gonna change some note somewhere.
It says, condition on decision of the ZBA.
It's more than that, is it?
Not just spam math, but I'm just, that's, because of that, I don't feel comfortable granting a conditional approval until we have that variance from the ZBA.
I agree.
And until we have the cemetery access easement issue resolved.
I mean, if the town, if the town owns a cemetery, obviously, we'd want an easement. I think you ought to have a note saying that the purpose of this easement is to define the existing easement, instead of just saying proposed 25-foot wide easement. Because theoretically, there's still an undefined easement someplace. There's an undefined-
Yeah, I'm just trying to see where I had the notes, yeah.
Right above L4. That's someplace I see a note about the easement.
Well, Note 7 says, there is currently reserved cemetery and the right to pass and repass to it. Blaisdell Survey, LSC, has done its best to show its current location with limited physical evidence, which seems to have been disturbed in the past. But I can then, you know-
I hope the easement document says something about defining the existing easement, and I would think that would wanna be in the, either on the map where it says 25-foot wide easement to cemetery, or Note 7.
Yeah, I can make a note saying there's an existing easement, and I'm trying to define it, and right where it is.
And I would say get rid of the other one, and make a new one.
Yep.
Just so the other one doesn't hang in limbo title-wise. I can see some stupid title attorney going nuts over that in 50 years. Of course, 50 years, I'm not gonna care what title it really does. Anybody with a public comment?
So there's no, so there's basically pretty much-
Nope, first of all, you gotta come to the podium and state your name, so Tina gets it in minutes, and we have this large live audience at home, likes to hear you.
Yes, so my name's Chuck Sargent, I'm the owner of the property. I just wanted to go over basically what we have left for difficulties, you said, basically the cemetery, and then the-
Zoning variance.
The what? Variants, right, so is there any way we can just do a conditional approval based off getting those items? I mean, you know.
I don't, personally, I wouldn't want to, because the cemetery's, we don't know who owns the cemetery, who's getting easement-
Right.
-at this point.
Right.
And in my opinion, a conditional approval of this application kinda hints to the zoning board, if nothing else, that we're happy with it.
Right, right, which if it doesn't go through the zoning board, that it wouldn't get approved anyway. That's why I just, I don't know, just a suggestion, if we could look at that, so that way, you know, we can move forward if all those things line up together. If they don't, it won't anyway, you know what I mean? So, just throwing that out there.
I understand.
Okay, that was all.
Any bells, have any comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Frank Olmash at 371 South Stock Highway. I represent the owner, Richard Morgan. I am the property manager, and have an interest in the property. And the only thing I have to say, which probably isn't having anything to do with what we're talking about tonight, is I am still gonna dispute my property line boundaries that are out there right now, that have been done. I still feel that it's not right. So I'm gonna have it surveyed in the spring, when the ground is thawed, and when it's feasible to do so. Till then, I, you know, I don't wanna really railroad this thing, but I'm not gonna back it until I, I'm comfortable with it. That's the only thing I really have to say about that.
Did you two-
What is your relationship with it?
I am part of the owner of the property, and I'm also the, I also am taking care of it for the owner, who is away.
You two did meet and discuss that, I assume? You two did meet and discuss the boundary?
He brought this up last meeting, I said I will go over, so I spent several hours making up, showing how I came up with what I did, and I emailed it to him within a few days of our meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Which I looked at both parts. I came to the town, and I got, I got the deed from the town, and I read it, and I looked at it, and I reviewed what you sent me, what we have here. And I still have a dispute with some of the numbers, and I'm not comfortable just saying it's okay, because I'm not doing my due diligence to the owner, all my best interests in the future.
Where is your property?
371, which is west, down in this corner here.
Yeah, which line do you dispute?
I dispute the whole thing. I really dispute.
What is the whole thing?
My property line.
That whole line?
The boundary between us.
The boundary between both parties.
And where do you think it is?
Where the tax map shows it.
Um, no, not, well, that's where I thought at one time, but after reading the deed, there's still discrepancy on numbers.
Okay.
So, the deed and the numbers here do not match that I'm calculating and I'm reading. Basically, it's the 118.73, doesn't match the deed in hand, I believe it's like 131.
Because the road was moved and expanded by about 20 feet or more when the highway was wide.
So that was never put into place, updated?
The, the deeds just keep saying the same thing over and over again. So a strip of land is taken off our parcel and yours?
Yeah.
So, it's an-
I still, I'm still disputing the backyard area, where you come into the backyard where I thought that it was further, and you're digging here, and I'm digging there, my kids are putting a tree log-
I survey, I survey our winter, so I wouldn't wait till spring because of the-
I wanna wait till spring, I think that's my right.
Okay, no problem. Just don't say spring is stopping, I mean, the weather-
The weather's not gonna stop.
But if you guys find something different?
No, I mean, I think it's our due diligence, and it's our right to do that, so that's why I'd like to go with that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if this were to be approved at some point, and if subsequent to that point, another survey were done, and this one became inaccurate, what would happen to our approval?
Nothing.
This would become a civil matter.
Right, civil matter between the two parties.
And they could go to court and-
There's nothing to do with us.
He's trying to try and take a sliver off of a five-acre lot.
So it wouldn't create a problem, because the lot would be less than five acres? It wouldn't create a problem because of some distance to a buffer line, or a boundary, or anything like that?
I mean, it may, I mean, I'm not saying it wouldn't. I mean, heaven forbid all of a sudden the line's through here, of course it's gonna, of course, everything's different, but as far as working, as far as the board's concerned, it should be a civil matter between the two parties. If he came up with a surveyor, and the surveyor said I disagree with him, and he had here all the information in front of us, then we can delay it a little bit, but without another surveyor disagreeing with him, there's no disagreement, because you have two surveyors disagreeing.
But if, if ultimately it turns out that the line is, should be located elsewhere, and this lot, as a result of that change, no longer meets the criteria, what happens to the approval that we gave? Could he build, could he build on a two-and-a-half acre lot?
This becomes non-buildable. If for some reason the line, the lot gets so small-
It would have to change dramatically for that.
Oh, yeah, have to change, because you're in the residential zone.
What happens if it's sold and a house is built?
The title company's gonna weigh in on that.
No, because there's always a survey exception from the title company.
Right.
They're just saying, yes, you have ownership of a piece of property someplace in this general area, they aren't gonna say, yes, it's this shape, unless you do an alter survey. That's not gonna happen. I doubt it. I've seen it happen all the time, Neil.
How great a sliver-
Especially like 40 years ago.
Are we ta, how great a sliver are we talking about? Quarter of an acre, tenth of an acre?
Less than a quarter acre, if he's trying to go by what the tax map shows. I don't rely on tax maps.
So how many acres is it?
Almost four.
Yeah, almost four. And what does he need, two?
Two. It's, it's a five-acre lot.
Oh, the upland's four acres, I'm sorry. Yes, five acre, 5.01.
And it would be just a sliver on the furthest away. I can't see somebody going all the way and putting their house right there. I mean, this is- And that's not anything that's-
Dispute.
Okay.
Technically, there's no dispute yet.
Do you want to continue this till, uh-
When's the, when's the ZBA hearing?
Our first Tuesday in February.
And cemetery trustees are meeting tomorrow?
6, no, there's no meeting. They're reviewing it, and Bill Tiffany is gonna come in and tell me what he found out.
First Tuesday is not, is not this upcoming Tuesday, but the Tuesday after.
Yeah, 7.
Two weeks.
Because of the three of them, Janet Brown's in Florida, and Robbie Gordon is-
And we have a meeting on the 9th, so we're gonna talk in two days. ZBA is the 7th, we meet tonight.
So you wanna continue this to the 9th?
Well, I wanna make sure we get the cemetery thing straightened out before now and then either, I don't see how that's gonna happen yet.
I guess so, if it's not done, then you can call us and say, don't come. And, because we, we really would like to get this finished up, not that you're holding us up.
I'm just trying to make sure that you come back and, whatever day, you know what you need to do.
I'd say give us the earliest possible date, and if, on your side, the attorney's still thinking about stuff, put it to another one, we're okay with that.
And if we have to cancel it till the next meeting, that's fine. If we don't have the cemetery information.
Well, who's getting, who's getting the cemetery information, is my question.
Me!
You, okay. So we continue till the 9th?
So move.
I'll make that motion. Before you vote, I'll defer to John. He's been here, I haven't been here about the date on what's going on.
Too late.
Really?
I didn't appoint him as a voting member, because you're here.
Yeah, you can vote to continue, Frank. That's easy.
Who even said abstain, I don't care.
I wasn't even here for this meeting, Frank, so just abstain, abstain of this one.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, who made the motion?
I did.
You both did, well.
Neil seconded.
Neil seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Hey, thank you.
Technically, if we don't, if we still have something up in the air for the cemetery, I'm gonna open the hearing, continue it right away, we'll let you know we're gonna do that, so you don't have to drive over here.
I have about 45 minutes, I appreciate that.
With that, I have to open it, continue it for the abutters. Yes. Do you want these?
I think I have one.
All blue and red and green and blue?
Yeah.
There's four of them right here.
He did them all in color.
Why did he skip calling campaign?
Done.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
I was gonna say, you just confused me.
See, you're thinking about that truck bed.
Second item on the agenda is a site plan for Philip Morano and 1702 River Road, for recycling business in the industrial zone.
Included in that, all of the, in your little package there, the notes from Piscataqua, yeah.
See, I even did that inside. I actually spent 25 minutes.
They're in there, too.
That's where we handle?
He did that instead of calling me.
That's great. It's gonna be quicker to call you.
And I probably have one big one of this. I handed them all out, and they, only one got returned. Actually, two. No, vacant.
If I can't read something, I'll, I'll holler.
Where's this in relation to Frank Burles?
No, Frank Burles.
The bridge is right down here.
Where's the plumbing?
Plumbing?
The remolade, where's his place?
That's the southern of the town.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I read River, River Road, and I was thinking River Town.
Got it. This is the one that has the building on it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right between Rockland and, and- Take my copy?
Yes, sir.
Can John step in for me on this?
If you step down, yes, you can step in.
Yeah, okay, I'll step down, defer to John, okay?
I put John as a voting member.
Can I have that back, Frank?
Thank you. Going through the checklist quickly, the only things I see are... Yes, I saw that. The checklist items, I, the well and the beach field, it appears you don't have one.
Right.
Okay.
Portable toilets, and I think that's noted on there.
Yes, it is, but I think the checklist should have said NA, not check.
What's that mean, still on that track?
I'm assuming that's what I wanted, that they say.
Interesting.
It's just pretty much a hole behind the, there's an alley because of the tracks there.
Oh, no, no, right.
I'm surprised the state of New Hampshire didn't know that. We can make a motion, yes.
Move that we accept the application as complete.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstain? Okay.
Public comment will be just a-
Geez, yeah, yeah, hang on. I'm just saying the application's complete, that means the checklist has been made, I'm not saying it's approved or anything else, it's just, we can talk about it now, that's all that means. Yes, sir.
I'm Philip Morano, I own a company called Scrap Metal Management. I like to buy and sell non-ferrous metals out of that property.
Where are these containers going to be relocated, relocated to?
It's hard to see. It all depends, you know, probably, I mean, you have to be on the site to show you.
Will it be within the building setback line?
It would be in between those two buildings, if, if we even need those trailers, we're not even gonna need them there.
What I'm getting at is you have a lot of containers or trailers-
Oh.
...located between something called the building setback line-
And across the ground door.
-and on, on and across the property line.
Oh, those are gonna be, those are gonna be taken out of that.
So there will be-
They'll be disposed of.
So there will be no trailers between the setback line and the property?
Absolutely right.
Okay, and what about the waste station?
It's just a scale inside the building.
Is that there now?
Yeah, the building's there. No, it's just a, it's a supportable scale, you come in, basically, it'll be like a square scale with a digital readout, you come in with your copper, your brass, you put them on the scale, we, we take your license, and we weigh it, we pay you.
This is 1,500 square feet?
That's the building.
Right.
Is that building there now?
Yes.
Is that the building we see when we drive by?
Yep.
I see.
It's not, it's not gonna be like this big scrap operation where, it's not gonna be that, that's not what I wanna do.
You say proposed storage and waste station.
Yeah, you should've said, you should've said existing building to be used for storage and waste station.
I didn't write the plan, I mean, I checked it the best way I could with them.
So the same as the other building, it says proposed storage, 640 square feet, that's also existing, I assume?
Right.
Are you going to build any new buildings?
If I, if business deems to be good enough, I absolutely would.
As of right now, you're not planning?
No.
Right, right now, you're not planning on building any buildings, adding any-
I don't even know if I can even get enough business around yet, to be honest with you. I just wanna see it, if it works good for everybody, and, you know, I'm an asset to the community, and I can make a couple bucks out of it, then it'll be great, but if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. I just wanna see it, if it works good for everybody, and, you know, I'm an asset to the community and I can make a couple bucks out of it, then it'll be great, but if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out.
And where will the scrap metal be stored?
Inside the building, and then we'll pick it up and put, with a fork truck and put it inside trailers.
And the trailers will be somewhere on this site?
Yes.
So if we were to drive by in the future, if you're successful, and I hope you are, um, we would see the existing building plus five or ten, whatever it is, trailers?
Exactly.
And, and those would be trailers that have wheels under them?
Yes.
Not storage containers that are permitted to-
Well, some of them are, will be storage containers and some of them have wheels on them.
Is there any chance? You look at this plan and it really doesn't say what the scope of your business is.
Buy and sell.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I'm not asking you what the scope of your business is.
No, they're saying the plan doesn't say it.
Right.
Okay.
So if you could put something on the plan that says what the scope of your business is, then it would help clarify a lot of things.
Bruce, note three doesn't help?
Yeah, but it doesn't really describe what he, note three doesn't say what Mr. Romano's saying, in my opinion.
This business will be storing dump trucks, heavy equipment, or tractor trailers, as well as purchasing scrap iron, storing that iron, and trucking it off-site.
Yeah, but that's very vague, scrap iron would be trucks that don't run.
Right.
So basically what he's saying is, I understand what he's saying, exactly what I'm doing to achieve.
Right, it would help alleviate a lot of people's questions, answer a lot of questions, maybe fears people might have.
Right.
I think that's part of the problem, is people aren't understanding just what it is, when they hear scrap metal.
They get scared, I understand, I absolutely understand.
And when that note is on there, that's very, very vague, I mean, you could be especially because it mentions trucks and everything right in the same note, you could be bringing in trucks that are-
Yeah, right, cutting them out, right, 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 that's not my plan.
So, and I think that's kinda what the
I, I think the business, the note should say at least something to affect the business is, is a recycling business. I mean, your business isn't storing, your, your business is recycling, and that's, that's what you presented to us, it's a conceptual.
These container pads here on the northern part of the property, uh, they're concrete pads, what are they?
I don't know, they're not concrete, there's, I, I put a bunch of gravel in there and I graded the whole place off nice.
Okay.
It's all gravel.
Where, where they're existing today, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no concrete pad.
That would have to be removed, would it not?
I don't think we're talking about, I don't think he's talking about the same thing. Where it says container pad that's across the property line, you said you were gonna move them earlier?
Oh, yeah, I can get those out of there, that's not that.
He said before, John, that at the top of the diagram, just like the arrow, where there are four objects-
Well, he mentioned the containers, but it says pad on here, that's my question, are the pads gonna be reclaimed?
Container, oh, he said it's a pod, I, I, that's what he wrote, pod, you know, like a, like a pod, the-
I just wanna make sure it wasn't a concrete pad.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Romano, when you're, when you say you will be storing dump trucks, heavy equipment, or tractor trailers, these are related to the business and being used in the business, is that correct?
Correct.
So you're not taking fifty dump trucks and storing them there for sale, you'd have however many you need to move your scrap metal email.
Exactly, and to, and to repair, to repair them.
I think you need to make that clear, that these, that the business, that, that these vehicles are being placed there for use in the business, not as a separate activity.
Okay.
Yes, I was trying to say, it's a recycling business, not a storing, storing dump truck business.
Right.
We do have comments from the Scatacog River Local Advisory Committee. Basically, they said this site is located directly across River Road from the Scatacog River. Two eighteen-inch drainage pipes under River Road carry drainage from the site towards the river. P R L A C is concerned with potential runoff from the new use and with the possibility of contaminants from the site's past use. To checklist, to check the possibility of such contamination, P R L A C recommends sampling of the runoff from the two drainage pipes as part of the site plan review.
But I think they kinda made that I'm sure some of the recommendations was, again, not knowing just exactly what was happening, what was proposed to happen.
When, when you say, when you say scrap metal, would that contain fluids?
No, absolutely not, I'm not taking anything in, it's gonna be copper, brass, aluminum, you know, car rotors, it's just nice, light, easy things. It's nothing gonna be, it's not gonna be automotive industry stuff, only the automotive industry would be like a catalytic converter, uh, you know, a car radiator that would be drained, you know?
So that you drain, or you buy it?
No, that, I wouldn't take anything that has fluids in it, I wouldn't pollute the property.
Make sure that that's on this, as a description of the business, no scrap metals containing liquids
Okay.
would be brought in, because that will, in my mind, will alleviate some of these concerns.
I'll absolutely put that.
Well, yeah, backing up, okay. The Conservation Commission also looked at it, said the Conservation Commission reviewed the plan and has concerns that proposed activities do not contribute to runoff through the culvert to the north branch of Scatacog, directly across the street. Runoffs should not degrade water or river water quality. They're also requesting wetlands along the eastern boundary of the site should also be depicted.
The eastern, yes?
Eastern. So there must be some wetlands, at least they're thinking, maybe wetlands in the east side.
There is.
Yeah, not this second, the culvert closest to the tidal waters, that drains a big wetland there in the corner.
Oh, yeah, did you get the one about the excavation?
P R L A C and Conservation, what I got? Well, maybe it's in this packet you gave me, that was from the packet I had.
Oh, it's in here. We want everyone to be informed.
Yes, we do. This is an email from Kyle, who was- That's what I was gonna guess, Bazillion, this is, yes. Thirteen Rockland Road. He's the abutter to the east. Hi, my name is Kyle Bazillion, owner of Thirteen Rockland Road, map two oh two on ninety-one, I would like to formally submit that I am disapproving of butter of the planned construction on Seventeen O Two River Road, map two oh two on one oh three. I have great concerns about the excavation being within five hundred feet of my residence as per section five, prohibited projects B three of the Where Earth Products Ordinance.
Sir?
I also have a great deal more concerns that I will voice to public hearing on Thursday, January twenty-sixth. Are you doing any excavation?
I didn't excavate nothing, I, I put, I put in gravel and graded the place off, that's all I did. The place was a dump when I bought it, I cleaned it all up, I made it ten times better than what it was.
Well, sometimes, yep.
I mean, Frank ran trucks out of there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, I mean, he had refrigeration units. I'm trying to do something nice within, you know, a lot better than what it was, I'm trying to make the place better. I wanna be an asset to the community, not an asset to the community.
Okay, now it's time for the public, anybody have a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for Tina?
My name's Donald Wellman, I would like to be considered an abutter, I live at Twenty-One Rockland Road. I look directly down on everything happening in this property. Between us, there's a stream. The stream drains from up the hill, it runs freshwater year-round, and it goes under the culvert that was discussed as being just south of the property. That stream is carrying multiple quantities of water, especially in runoff time. During the time of Everett Stone, when Frank asked for a zoning variation to include the little triangle portion that's to the east on your map, an agreement was reached to protect that wetland area, which is also related to this runoff system coming from across Rockland Road and under Rockland Road, and was declared a wetland, and Frank understood that, which means that the apron could not abut the stream that separates the property from the portion to the east.
Apron?
The apron on which the trucks were parked by Frank. Frank's agreement was that no more than five trucks would be parked on that apron overnight at any one time. I am very unsatisfied with the, uh, protection of wetlands, with the amount of vehicle traffic that's projected, with noise, et cetera. I would like to be declared an abutment, I believe I'm less than a hundred feet uphill from that stream, which is also part of the plot that's being used for these purposes. And, uh, I think I also have one more, I, there's been talk about a fence or a barrier or something, if I'm a, a butter, that would be great. I would like to say that this summer I could've sold my tiny little house for a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm seventy-three years old, if this goes through, I will be unable to sell my house for more than fifty or forty thousand dollars, because it will totally degrade my immediate environment. I may have other things to say, but I hope no action is taken before I return from a, a trip to Spain where I do some work, which will take the next six weeks. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Yes, what do you see different in the use that's proposed compared to the trucking business that was there?
The apron will now abut the stream that I've been talking about in several respects. The number of vehicles that will be parked will be well excess of, of five. I admit that you cleaned up the site beautifully in some respects, because Frank had all kinds of trailers scattered in the woods and looking down on them was horrible. But I did not have to contend for the last thirty-three years with industrial noise pollution in my backyard, essentially. Whatever the metal is, there're gonna be trucks coming and going, there's gonna be some kind of cutting and grinding. To me, it is highly unwise of the town of Ware to create an industrial zone for such a small piece of land when everything else around it is residential. When I heard of the land sale to, I believe your, a company actually owns it, it may be your company, to a family in, I think it was Salem, Massachusetts, I asked for clarification over a year and a half ago as to what the use of the land would be, thinking I could enter some kind of discussions and help people understand options and whatever. I have never heard, although the message was passed to the town clerk to the then-owner. Things like that make me feel hostile to this project, and I feel it threatens my welfare as an abutting home.
If I, if I could sort of, technically you're not an abutter, because there's a statute that defines an abutter, and it doesn't say within a hundred feet, it's directly across the road or directly abutting, so technically, I understand you're close. I understand that, and you, and you certainly-
The map shows a right-of-way that used to belong to the famous Harold Hall, which is also, I believe now, uh, a property of Gilman Transportation. I believe the distance between my house and that right-of-way is less than a hundred feet.
It has to be, it has to be touching to be, to be a defined as an abutter.
Well, I'm speaking as a, you know-
You're concerned, concerned neighbor. Yes, I don't have a problem with that. Also, we do have wetland ordinances in town, yes, there's a twenty-five-foot buffer from all wetlands, so you can't, that's why, that's why the Conservation Commission, I'm sure is one reason they're asking for the wetlands to be identified. You can't do anything within twenty-five feet of wetlands, just to let everybody know that, so-
Well, that's a specific concern of mine, because my view of the site plan is that they wanna push the gravel right to the edge of that stream that's both to the east and to the north of the property.
Well, I haven't asked the question yet, but I don't think he's planning on any
Okay.
expansion, I'm not sure that, I hadn't asked that question yet, but-
Good, Mr. Wellman, could you show us where the apron was, or where it is on this map? Here.
River Road.
River Road's here, so you're, you're-
So the, uh, land might go this far to the stream, but the apron was right in there, almost dead center in this lower portion. The rest was used for storage and junk.
And this apron has been moved or expanded?
It's being expanded now, the pads he was talking about are being built over here between these houses.
No, no, you said this was the area of concern, that he was encroaching on a wetland.
Right. I've been told that the plan is to bring the apron all the way to the edge of the wetland.
He can't do that because of the barrier, he can't do anything in this thirty-foot strip.
And he doesn't have any permits to build anything.
Yeah, he doesn't have any permits to build anything yet.
You know, it's just parking space and, where is the indication of the other stream that's going to the Gilman property and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's-
That and the wetland are not on here.
It will be, yes.
Now, those are some of my concerns.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any votes from the public?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Kyle Bazillion, I live at Thirteen Rockland Road, and currently, I actually have a lot of pictures that'll probably solve a lot of the situation, um, if you don't mind me approaching the bench.
Bench?
The board. Your wetlands.
It's a tie through, we off, I was confused with it.
This is the stream, and this is a survey land marker, this is his, provided, this is the stream that goes to that culvert.
Which culvert? There are two. Directly here, the culvert is here, these are, this is River Road.
Yeah.
Culvert one, culvert two, here's the wetland area.
Okay, it's directly right on the property line, as his surveyor shows.
So that's the stream feeding this culvert?
And this is currently active, my lot is, um, this lot here.
Oh, you own that wetland?
Yes. This is the stream that's currently flowing right now.
That, that's from the same picture?
Yep.
Same stream?
Yep. And as you see, this embankment, that's basically where his trucks are parked now, right on the other side.
Is, is that new, or?
Here's more pictures, that's where those are the trucks.
When were these pictures taken, sir?
Today. This is the addition that he put on, and-
He didn't put on any addition?
He fixed this up, excuse me, I'm before. Big time, you did a really good job, I was just about to say, this looks really nice compared to what it used to be. Um, and this is just pictures of the current land that's taken today, containers, and this, my, I'm not an expert, but this looks like a permanently stored fuel tank, oil.
On, on this picture, could you locate it in terms of the stream and the wetland?
Yep, I have more pictures of that.
No, but just, I can't-
Directly right on side of this, where this unit is stored, directly-
Back here?
Yep, all that land is, all the wetland.
Is this the area where he added new gravel?
No, the intention on the proposed drawing, I don't know if, um, if you have this dotted line here, this is the existing edge of the gravel, if you guys drive by, you'll see where the trucks are stored right here, and where that existing gravel is, this is a planned expansion, because he's parking new dump trucks and heavy equipment and tractor trailers. This line here indicates where the gravel is right now, and as this drawing clearly states, that they will be parking directly on the other side of the edge of the existing gravel.
Sure, are these items we, 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 these are from this gentleman or from the prior owners?
No, that's today, that I-
I, I understand that.
That's not even my things, those are Frank Burles' things, he left them there, I was doing anything there to try to, make the place look a lot better.
Relax, we can, we can, we'll get, we'll get a give and take going here, don't worry.
Still currently-
We don't, we don't, just don't need to be arguing.
This is the status of the property still, multiple, multiple containers, and that is as of today.
Do you know, do you know if these containers were there prior to him purchasing this?
Um, they are currently there, and he owns the property, so-
I understand, the floor is there.
If they are abandoned property, that they have to be removed prior to sale, and so they, they contain, they're there, so now they're passed on to the new.
No, I understand that, but is this something he brought in or is this stuff that he's inherited that he's, that he may be intending to remove?
Fact of the matter is they're still there.
I understand that. I'm not disputing that.
I can't, I can't say for a fact that they were there or they weren't there, but I know for a fact they're there now.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
It appears that you were on the property when you're taking these pictures?
Yes.
Did you have permission to do that?
It is not posted. It's freely free to travel on. There's no listed, no trespassing sign, so the property is open and not posted, no trespassing, so, and public property.
You can work on my property?
It's not public property, it's private property. If you fell on my property, you'd be suing me, right?
But technically, you have to post it as no trespassing or it is open to the public because the public has no idea that it is no trespassing. More pictures there.
Well, come on, it'll be posted.
I just, just to interrupt. What this is all going to come down to is just asking you to be more specific. I think there's a reason to be upset.
Oh, no, I, I understand, but I bought an existing... I'm sorry.
And this is the certified drawing of my lot, included are all the wetlands. And the actual parking area is indicated on the certified town map. And this was all before I moved in, so this has nothing to do with me. I'm not being vindictive whatsoever to the...
That town map isn't legal.
It's what?
That town map is not legal. Cannot be used for sure date boundaries.
Here's another one signed off by the Town of Ware. This will indicate a lot of the wetland questions that you were...
That looks like a septic plan.
It'll show everything. I'm sorry, this is probably the best indication of world wetlands. This will have all the information on it. Poorly maintained wetlands, the 100-year flood zone that is there currently. And that drawing also indicates where the brook is. I also have questions through the Town of Ware zoning ordinance, updated of March 2016. My biggest question is in section 25, the permitted nonuses of industrial areas. I definitely had a question on maintaining the buffer strip. In an industrial district, any new commercial or new industrial activity, clearly stated in the ordinance, adjoining to an existing residential home, which is mine, at the effective date of this ordinance or land in a residential district shall not locate within 100 feet of a property line or the boundary separating two districts and shall provide or maintain a strip of native plantings approved by the planning board sufficient to act as visual screen and sound buffer in the submitted drawings to the, to you guys, gentlemen. There is no indication of that whatsoever.
If I, if I may, this site was zoned industrial and your site was probably zoned residential at the time zoning passed in town. So this use was in existence prior to this ordinance?
Yes, but it is still, would be considered new activity or else we wouldn't be here for for approval of the map. As I clearly discovered and stated that there will be expansion of the edge of the gravel.
We don't know that yet. He said, he, we don't know that. You're assuming that at this point?
I make a very vast assumption that due to the wetlands that are there, that some sort of sub-pavement would have to be put in gravel that you could park a truck on due to this drawing says specifically parking areas for dump trucks, heavy equipment and tractor-trailers. And that's off the edge of the existing edge of the gravel. I also have several questions on the Town of Ware earth products ordinance. Let's see. The excavation plan shall include all existing surface drainage patterns, including wetlands, which this one currently does not.
Which article are you reading, please?
I am page 11. Under...
Earth excavation ordinances, which unless they're taken over 10,000 cubic feet, does not apply.
There was no excavation, was there?
Was, do you think there was an excavation? Did he dig something on the property?
According to this drawing, that there will have to be excavation.
Excavation means digging, not just dumping.
Right. In order to flatten the land that the gravel will have to be moved over to, there will have to be excavation adding fill, which is directly, directly next to the wetlands.
Adding fill is not excavation.
You will have to remove land to level it.
Over 10,000 cubic feet.
But it is definitely within 25 feet of wetlands.
He can't, he can't disturb it within 25 feet of it.
Absolutely. I agree with you 100%. And for the purpose of groundwater protection, my well is really close to this lot. Groundwater protection, a log or a boring test or test pits extend to either historical high water table ledge or a minimum of six feet. I want that to be addressed due to the existing containers.
But he's not doing, he's not filing for an excavation permit?
Correct, but there will be excavation that will have to be done if he's going to expand. I think that a representative from the town should go and look exactly at what he's doing.
We're gonna go look.
Thank you.
We said that to the conceptual, we were gonna say one.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Well, I can let you guys have copies of all this information. Furthermore, in the permit application section of the earth products ordinance, any actions taken by the applicant site relative to fuel, oil, chemical handling and storage, dust control, traffic and noise control, if there's going to be vehicles there and pods, no, the pods will be removed, but if there're going to be storage trailers there, then there will be fuel.
But again, but again, you're reading out of the excavation requirements.
Correct.
Which we, which do not apply yet.
So in order, so if, note this comment. I believe that if any sub-ground is moved within the wetlands, then it will fall into excavation.
If he removes 10,000 cubic feet?
Correct.
But it's usually for like gravel, for small gravel pits.
That 10,000 cubic feet has to leave the site. Can't be, if it's reused on the site?
Right, but within the wetlands boundaries, no soil can be altered.
He can't do anything in the wetland over the 25 feet.
My case in point, that the wetlands border with the...
He can't, he can't dig in the wetlands or the buffer without permits from other boards.
No expansion on the gravel within the wetland boundaries.
He can't do anything in the wetland or 25 feet of it.
So I would like that to be approved of by the town before any type of construction. The wetland boundaries.
That's already in the law.
We've already stated, well, Conservation Commission recommended. We haven't said that yet.
Correct.
We are going to recommend the wetland.
Correct. So within the town ordinances, the wetlands boundary, I would love, I would like that to be recognized. And furthermore, I actually just built my house two years ago. You guys probably have driven by and seen it many times. I came in and invested a lot, basically everything, every monetary value that I own into that property. And I strongly disagree with an industrial facility moving in. With the pictures of the, how the lot is kept as of to this day, there has been a very, very, very hit on my value of my house. And resale value...
I don't understand this.
I don't either.
When you bought the house, forgetting about Mr. Romano, there was already this equipment and trucking use in the building. There's been no change.
There has been a huge change. They have removed, he's done an excellent job and removed all the industrial equipment. Literally, the noise survey that was taken during the voting day here in the town, I actually came and I voted and I suggested that the traffic going up and down that road is crazy. I know that a lot of those trucks are just cutting through to 77 on Rockland Road, but any additional industrial trucking is going to burden that.
I, I understand that. What I'm trying to, what I want to understand is, despite all your arguments, what, what's the real concern? You, you can't do anything about the existing property, right?
Yes.
Whatever trucking was done there, whatever the owner had left on that property, you bought, you bought your house and you knew that was there and that use was there and you were willing to accept it.
Correct. When I used it, they stored tractor-trailers there.
And there was trucking going in and out?
Yeah, they stored a tractor-trailer there, so they had to remove said equipment.
Let's assume that all of your concerns about the wetlands and the excavation and everything else is addressed. Mr. Romano now complies with all of our ordinances and he is changing the nature of the business from trucking to...
Recycling.
Recycling, okay? Forgetting about everything else, every other law has been complied with. Is that objectionable to you?
The, my biggest complaint would be basically the traffic, the noise and the unsafe areas. There's nothing, there's nothing blocking my property and his property.
What do you mean by blocking?
No noise prevention, no dust control.
If you wanted to put up trees or a barrier, you could do that. You want him to do that?
That, that's clearly how it states in the abutting industrial versus residential in the town ordinances.
It says there has to be a...
A strip maintained between industrial and residential.
Fine. We now have that. He's still, still dissatisfied with his...
My question with that is how does the town define the buffer of noise and...
We're going to define it just the way you like it now.
Perfect.
That's making, you're making some rash assumptions.
I'm, I'm trying to understand what his real concern is.
Yeah, I know what you're trying to do, but he's assuming, he's taking, you're saying, okay, I'll take care of it.
So then you'd be satisfied if that buffer was there, whatever meets the town.
Absolutely. If there was a noise and dust buffer put between our properties?
Whatever, whatever the ordinance says, not something that you'd like beyond the ordinance, but the requirements of the ordinance.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm a resident of Ware and I...
So you don't object to his business, you object to the fact that there may be some noise from his business that adversely affects your property?
Correct. And the wetlands and any additional building if his property is successful.
He is, he is not proposing to put up any buildings in addition to what exists there?
Correct, but it was clearly stated on record that... We'll have to come back here.
You'll have to come back here real tightly.
Yes, and I live here, so I will.
The way you have here is that the owner of the property, if he's going to do anything different than what he's proposing now, put up an additional building or anything, and we'll have additional hearings at that time. Right now, there's nothing proposed for a new building, so he can't do it unless he comes back and gets permission.
Correct, and you gentlemen cannot approve the application until the wetland boundary has been verified.
We can, but we, we can, but I don't think we will.
I just want to see it exactly where maintained, how Ware is now. And I do not want to see what represents in those pictures happen to the Town of Ware.
But it seems, sir, that that's going to be rectified.
I was gonna say.
That was not included in any of the drawings and I literally, this is my first time meeting the owner of the land and not any of this was specified on this drawing.
Well, I agree. The drawing does not specify much. It's pretty vague. I agree. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want these back?
Please. Those are my only copies.
Can I, can I take a look at that septic design report?
I feel like I beat my printer up so much today.
I understand that.
Looks like you ran out of ink.
It was close.
It also is getting dark out. Everything turned blue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I was gonna go there again. Yes, sir. You gotta go to the podium. Like I said, before, we have a live, big live audience just waiting to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Donald Wellman again, 21 Rockland Road. And I understand that I do not have property that directly abuts this property. In fact, Frank still owns property that directly abuts this property. There's a narrow strip, there used to be a hall road of Harold Hall's between the two areas. And my point about the site and the noise is that I look directly down on the apron where all of the activity will occur from my deck, from my bedroom. There has to be some due consideration for this geographical proximity to a developed and expanded industrial use.
I, I apologize, sir, because I didn't, I didn't mean to sound like you're not in a butter seat, you don't have anything to say. I was just saying that's why you didn't get a legal notice.
I have, that's fine.
Your concerns are certainly...
Thank you.
Valid.
And this is a question again about the site development, which was triggered in my mind by the use of the word excavation. I don't know if there are any plans for excavation, but when you look at the land to the east and north of the two huts that are there, it is all an upgraded area that will be of no use unless it's graded and flattened. And I would like to know if there are plans for the use of that sloping land, which is more than one-third of the entire lot.
This plan doesn't show any changes there.
Nope.
What?
The plan, the plan we have does not show any changes to the grading.
Well, I think that should be a caution and then a determination.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
You know, my name is Fred Rogers. I'm a friend of, in the business acquaintance of Mr. Phil Romano. And I took a look at this. I've seen the property prior when he bought it, what it looked like. What he's done this far without being able to operate a business on there, he's made significant changes. I think we all kind of understand the dynamics of exactly what he's looking to do. Phil's never mentioned to me about doing any excavation other than to merely just move some things around. The containers, which we'll call them pods, will be relocated to a certain area. When the trailers were there prior to the, the previous owner, they were all even set off of the setbacks. And Phil has now agreed he's going to make this all look a lot better. This is a very clean operation. It's not going to be as much activity as what everybody's thinking that this is going to be. This is never going to become a superfund site by no means. It's just a mere way of a gentleman trying to do something good for the community, giving you guys some recycling opportunities and services. Other than some roll-off containers, tractors and trailers and maybe excavators that you need to do what he does in his business. I think this is a great thing for your community. And I will be one of the gentlemen that will be buying probably 90% of his metal. And as far as the trucks and the activity that come through there now, has my, it seems like is already a problem and he hasn't even started doing anything himself. Not to say that he's going to create more of a problem, but it sounds like whoever this group 77 and trucks that are coming through, that seems to be a problem. That seems to be a problem that's already been existing for a long period of time. As far as people who have maybe abutted the property from a distance and people who built when whoever this gentleman Frank was who had this here. There was, when I first saw the site, there was a lot of trails and it was a lot of mess. And it didn't seem to concern anybody then. I know Phil and I know that this will not become that situation. This will be a very nice and neat place. He's not the kind of guy to go digging around without getting approval. Putting up a building will be done properly. That's why he's here doing this properly and not just doing what he wants. So I'd like to give some recognition in that department and... So, I'd like to give some recognition in that department, and we're all, even Phil, are very sensitive to wetlands and conservation and all the things that you need to be sensitive. You have it spelled out for you, you have a property buffer zone, setbacks. It's the reason why this was all done. There's a lot of money spent on this, a lot of money spent on buying the property with the future to do something good. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public? Seeing nothing else, I close the public hearing.
Could we ask Mr. Romano to answer your questions?
We certainly can, 'cause there's a couple of questions I have right off the bat. Are you gonna do any grading out here?
Any grading?
Yes.
All we did, no, I'm not doing any grading. All I did was put gravel down on dirt I bought down from Chris Bolton down the street, and I spread it out on top of...
Well, that's where you messed up, those Chris Bolton trucks drove by their houses. I'm kidding. I'm sorry.
There's all trucks. There's fifty, sixty trucks over there.
I get sarcastics on that.
I know, I know. I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I mean, I just wanna let everybody know. I wanna make it better for you guys. I don't wanna hurt anybody's property value. That's not what I'm about.
I think the issue is that nobody understands what you're trying to do. You were here with a conceptual to us three months ago.
I don't wanna build no buildings. I just wanna neaten the place up. I wanna buy a little copper, brass, aluminum inside the building. You'll see some trucks, you'll see some cars, nothing more than what it already was, but it'll be ten times better and neater.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Do you know how many trucks are going by that property today?
I'd say one every fifteen, twenty minutes. It's unbelievable, the amount of trucks that go down that road.
With the bridge sign out, not many.
As I say, is the bridge open or not closed yet? Is it open yet?
It'll be open in a few weeks.
There'll be a lot more in a couple of weeks.
I mean, I would say fifty, sixty trucks a day.
And how many trucks will you have coming in and coming out per day, approximately? Assuming your business reaches the goal that you haven't, that you hope for, maximum in other words?
How would you say that?
It wouldn't be more so, I wouldn't say, it'd be more like pickup trucks.
Pickup trucks?
Than it's going to be big trucks.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be big trucks coming in there. It's gonna be more...
It's gonna be more like plumbers, electricians.
Plumber and electricians.
So, you're not going to send an eighteen-wheeler out to the countryside to pick up stuff and bring it back in?
No, no, no.
I'm gonna be delivering my scrap metal to you.
You're gonna be homeowners, and you're gonna do, take your gutters off your house, and you're gonna bring them to me, you're gonna put them on my scale, I'm gonna give you ten bucks, twenty bucks, whatever it is. I'm gonna say, "Have a nice day." You're gonna say, "Thank you very much," and we're gonna process it, leave it in our building, and then put it into a trailer, and then when the trailer gets filled, the tractor-trailer will come and pick it up and take it out.
And how many tractor-trailer loads will go out if you're successful?
If I'm successful, take ten a week.
That would be huge, but I don't think you'll see that. That would be huge. That's a lot of nonferrous.
Yeah, I mean...
That's a lot of nonferrous.
They own places in Boston and don't do ten...
You're only buying nonferrous?
Nonferrous, that's all I wanna buy. Copper, brass, aluminum.
You know, that's a shame. I've got this old iron tank out in the back forty that I was thinking of getting rid of. Okay, that was also a joke.
Make sure you detail that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the nonferrous metal should be in your note statement.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, 'cause Note Three actually specifies iron.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, it was hard to get Art to help me do this, 'cause he was really busy and it was really hard to put the plan together with him. It was just, that was what it was.
What you might wanna do is, is that take a note on the scope of your business.
You just need a nice quote on what I'm doing.
Why don't you prepare that? Give it to Art, let him just put on the plan.
Okay.
It's time.
Yeah, I was going to comment on Note Three there too, because the way it's phrased is misleading. For example, it says, "Storage of dump trucks and heavy equipment," and then in your, what it's telling us is, "That's all part of the business." It sounds like you're renting out space to store dump trucks. I know that's not what you're gonna do, but that's what it sounds like. So, I think that if you really concentrate on making that description a lot more specific so that people know of the parking of dump trucks and different related to business is more specific than of storage of dump trucks and equipment, which to me means something else. So, I think that as you phrase that, be sure that it's clear that everything that's there is related to your business under your ownership and not something that you're storing for other people.
Okay.
But I think that's an important point, because it is misleading there. And then the part about, it does say scrap iron, if that's not what you're gonna do, then better get that off and get, it's a different concept than what you're talking about. So, just the whole thing, as was already said, the description of exactly what you're gonna do, it's gonna go a long way, I think, to improving relations with the neighbors there. And even people who are concerned, sit down, walk the site, and you could explain exactly where everything's gonna be. And the rest of the stuff is in the ordinance anyways. You can't get within twenty-five feet of the wetland, and so, you know, the fear of that by others really isn't justified, because our ordinance says forbidden anyways, to screen whether it's planting of trees or any chore or whatever is in other plank that perhaps you should take up.
I mean, I wanna help. I don't wanna hurt. I truly, I mean, all those storage containers that were Frank's for years, I just put them back there. This week, I'll bring an excavator in and take every one of them out. It'll be up top. I mean, I'm gonna make the place nice. I don't want, I just wanna put up a nice little sign, buy a little bit of metal, make a little bit of money, and go home. That's all, that's what I'm trying to do.
You must have to process, usually scrap, whatever just comes in, needs some modification.
Basically, if it's a piece of copper pipe and there's a brass fitting on it, we cut the brass fitting off on a vice inside the building, and put brass to the brass and the copper to the copper.
How about wire?
We don't really get involved in stripping wire. The labor intensity is too much. All I'm doing is taking a product, buying it for a price, and selling it for a higher price, 'cause I'll have enormous amounts of it.
Will you be doing any processing of any material outdoors?
No.
Will you be having any heavy equipment outdoors that'll be active?
Fork truck, maybe a loader to plow snow. I mean, maybe an excavator to pick something up off a truck.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I mean, you have to have some type of heavy equipment.
So, primarily, all of your activities will be indoors?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it's just, there'll be an excavator there if we need it, there'll be a fork truck there if I need it, there'll be a loader there to plow snow if I need it, you know? I mean...
What would you do if I brought in a whole bunch of electrical wire instead of here? Pay me for this. What would you do?
I would take it, and there'd be a little cart, wheel it on our scale. You'd see the numbers, it's like twenty-five pounds. We take your license, 'cause we have to get a license from some people, you know, who come in, and we pay you. Then we take it off the cart, put it over to the separate boxes, and separate it, whether it's thicker wire, depending on the gauge, then we just sort it out and put it in boxes, and once the boxes got filled to the top, then we pick it up, put it into a trailer.
All the coating stays on the wire.
All the coating stays on the wire.
And are these vehicles that are dropping off these pickup trucks, they're just, are they packing into the building? Or is that gonna be happening outside?
I would say, I mean, I don't know. They'd have to come, they'd have to come up to the front of the door, wherever I have set up.
So, you'd be unloading outside of the building?
They would be putting the stuff in carts, bringing it in, and...
Okay.
So, if I bring you my lawnmower, what would you do?
I wouldn't take a lawnmower, 'cause it got gas and oil in it.
That's a good answer.
Thanks. I wouldn't want the aggravation, believe me.
We will need, I'm surprised Neil hasn't mentioned this yet, I see a little thing says proposed sign, we will need, oh, he has a circle too, okay. We will, I'm just trying to let you know everything right now. We will need details on how big your sign's gonna be, that kinda thing. What is it gonna say? Because we have ordinances, how big your sign can be.
Okay.
You have some proposed lights. I hope those are gonna be downcast, they're not gonna brighten up the neighborhood.
Anywhere you want. You tell me, you come to the site, everybody come to the site, and you tell me your concerns, and I'll work with anybody that's around.
I'm trying to let you know everything now.
I appreciate it.
So, you can change the plan and...
The ordinance spells out the sign requirements.
I'm not looking to make a problem. You know, and if I can, I'm gonna bring an excavator in this week, so everybody knows. All those trailers will be gone, all the ones in the back. All Frank's old stuff is all gone. It'll be gone by the end of the week.
You realize today's Thursday?
I'll have it done.
By Saturday.
By Saturday, we're done.
Okay. I wanted to make sure you weren't taking next week.
If you see excavators over there, we're not digging holes, we're gonna be removing metals and tires and other debris, a little bit that's left on the roadside. And I just wanna say, when I bought that place, it wasn't very nice, and I definitely made upgrades without making a dime with it. Before I came here, I was trying to make it better for people to see and to show that I was making upgrades, not run some shambly, bad operation. I run a good operation, I've always done that.
How many employees will you be?
I would say three.
Three of this facility?
Yeah.
Full-time?
I would say, yeah, definitely.
Any hours stayed on here, seven to five, Monday through Friday, and seven to noon on Saturday?
Yes.
We would also, I would also like to see any, obviously, wetlands, let's say within all wetlands on the east side of the property. But I would like to see wetlands, say, within a hundred feet on the west side of your clearing, just to make sure we're not getting any issue over there.
Does the wetland show top and down?
Not necessarily, but yes, topo also, please, so we can see which way the water's draining.
Okay.
I assume this is close to, maybe in the flood zone? Because the river's right here. I don't know that. There should at least be a note saying not in the flood zone.
Okay.
Probably not in the offer protection district, I wouldn't think, would it?
No, it's probably in the AE zone.
Yeah, that's true, AE with elevation.
Yeah. No elevation.
AE has an elevation. X doesn't, right? Might be backwards.
I think you're backwards.
Could be.
Whatever, I doubt there's an elevation for that.
I doubt there is too, from horse leg down to, it'd be clunked down, ain't had an elevation.
Sure.
But a note about, not in the offer protection, not in the flood hazard, if it's not those things.
And I'll get you the minutes of the meeting, so you can pass that all on to Art.
Okay, I appreciate that.
If somebody comes in, and we just heard Saturday, seven to noon or something, so they decide, "I need to be over by five." Can I come back?
Yeah.
To you or to the board?
To you.
To the board.
Yeah? Well, I mean, I hate seeing people box themselves in. It seems like Saturday is the busiest day. Yeah. Why do you want to have a day? Flying.
'Cause he wants to go fishing.
I do like to fish. I just wanted to be cordial to the neighbors.
Okay.
That's the trouble.
Couldn't find a good reason.
I mean, honestly, I mean, nobody wants to see that stuff, and plus, you know, last year I had a bad heart attack. The reason why I'm turning my business down is I came up here to take it easy a little bit.
How's it working?
Oh, shit.
You're not gonna go right now?
But, I mean, all I wanna do is clean the site, make everybody happy, and I don't want anybody's property values to go down. I truly don't. I really don't. And if somebody came to me and you want trees, I'll put trees up. You want a fence, I'll put a fence up. Dust control, I don't think we're gonna have much dust. I don't, there's not dust. I'm not, I'm very easy to get along with, and I work with anybody. I understand your concern. You've gotta bring children up there, and you're worrying about your property value. Maybe I'll buy your house someday.
Then he can walk to work.
You know, but...
Will you be relocating up to work?
You know, if I could, I live in Western Berry, Mass, and if I could, I would move in a minute.
I'll switch. I love Western Berry.
Well, you talk to my wife, and if she's, you know, but I just wanna let you know, I'm not looking to ruin your children's home or cause trouble and ruin your property value. And I understand that concern, I absolutely do, but I'm willing to work with anybody. But you've gotta realize, I do have an investment here, and I need to make a living there myself. Just like you have to, you know, it was industrial land when I bought it, it was, you know, it was industrial land when you bought your houses.
No, it wasn't. It was rural agricultural.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I didn't know that. I didn't know how long it was, but...
What would make an offer on buyer?
You know, but, yeah, I mean, honestly, come and see me. Maybe we can make a deal.
Then you can have a property that's enough. If I have to chew it off my mouth, I have one very simple question.
Then you hear from us again.
Hear from you again, because I'm gonna buy your house?
Yeah.
They've got a bigger house.
Oh, what am I gonna do with it? I'm gonna live in it? What am I gonna do with it?
All right, this is very simple.
Will the metals include lead?
Probably not, no.
Better not. That should be stated clearly.
Craig, can we also do a plant site walk?
Yes, that's where I was gonna go to next. I have site walk written down over here already.
Let's do a site walk, I can't wait.
I wrote it down over here, too.
We all have site walk written down.
I need a walk.
So, when do you wanna do a site walk?
The next warm day.
You're all warm.
You gonna project that now?
Yeah, Monday.
Well, I would tell you, I can't today, Monday, or tomorrow, Monday or Tuesday.
There's a lot bigger knees in the spring.
What about Saturday?
I can do Saturday morning.
Barbed wire on these...
Saturday morning?
Not the Saturday morning.
I'm unable, I'm working.
Is it Saturday?
No, I'm working Friday night into Saturday.
Just this week?
Yeah.
Next Saturday, the fourth?
Next Saturday is the deliberative session.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sure all the concerned citizens will be at the deliberative session.
So...
We're not gonna schedule a site walk?
No, no, that would not be a good...
Collect with the deliberatives.
Can we just do it the ninth, before our meeting? Sun's still up.
Is Art, do you think?
Well, Art's in Florida, I understand.
Yes.
Yes.
When do you think Art would be, have the wetlands delineated and stuff like that?
I'm not sure. I don't know. I'd have to ask Art. I don't know his schedule.
Art told me he was taking all his stuff to Florida and that he was still working.
Well, yeah, but he can't delineate wetlands in Ware when he's in Florida.
But he's got his own, he's got his survey...
He has his survey crew.
I think he was going for six weeks or something. I think he was going for six weeks, something like that.
Do you wanna postpone scheduling of the site walk until we can get that information?
He could get somebody else to delineate the wetlands, if that's the only stumbling block.
So, can anybody, you said you can't Saturday morning, can you say afternoon?
Yes.
Say noon?
No. Two, definitely.
That messed up my whole day.
Are you talking this Saturday?
You want to do it five? No, it's a little dark at five.
Four?
No, I was thinking, nine, or eleven thirty, cause I'm getting my hair cut right at the road at eleven o'clock.
Nine to twelve on the way in takes me hard to get back.
Okay.
How about this?
Maybe a couple Saturdays from now?
Saturday the eleventh?
What, does that affect him for possibly coming back on the night?
Yeah, I don't think he'd be ready for the night.
I don't think he's gonna be ready for the nights anyway.
All right.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Eleventh is fine for me.
Bruce, Jeff, Neil?
What time?
What time? I have said a time, we got a day, eleventh, Saturday.
Nine?
This Saturday?
No, two weeks, two weeks and thirty.
I, I kept it on my calendar, let's assume it's okay.
Nine o'clock's good for me.
I will post it for that.
You wanna continue this until the second meeting in February?
Which is what, the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
I'll be in Florida, have a nice time.
Site walk?
I'll go out, have a cocktail with Art.
He's in California, I think, to see his daughter.
Yeah, I, I asked him California, he said, no, he was going to Florida, but he may have lied to me.
Uh, he told me, uh, California to see his daughter.
The only thing else I would notice, I would probably put down, you mentioned ten trucks a week leaving the site, I would probably put down something down there, deliveries only to be by pickups or something four-wheel, we have something of that effect. So, we aren't expecting eighteen-wheelers come in with whatever.
Right.
Now, on the site walk, will you invite any of the public that wanna come too?
Sure, let anybody come.
It's a public hearing, so...
If you guys wanna go on the eleventh at nine?
Absolutely.
It'd be nice if Art had the wetlands flagged before then, but if he doesn't, that's okay.
Okay.
I have a feeling between Bruce and I, we have a pretty good idea where they are.
I'll get ahold of him, you know, tomorrow, back then.
Like I said, if he can't, it's probably not a big deal, cause neither one of her soils are, I anticipate, I'm a surveyor, he's a soil, subject designer, so we can...
Okay, so February eleventh, at nine o'clock, we'll do a walkthrough, and then this, this, you know, but tomorrow and the next day, I'm gonna get all those trails out, maybe into Monday.
Is it okay if he does the wetlands?
What, takes the stuff out?
Depending on how, how much I can get guys to work. But I'll, I'll have everything nice.
By, by Saturday?
That Saturday.
No, no, he's talking about doing something by this Saturday.
But I just wanna let everybody know that we'll be an excavator there with a grapple on it, so that there're gonna be some crushing, and some taking some stuff out of there, stuff that'll be used in that, so, everybody knows that.
Where do you take that stuff?
Into Boston.
Does it market for it there?
Yeah, well, I mean, some of it'll have the paving room, but, you know, it's a lot, some of it's just stuff that he had there for years, and I just brought it out as soon as I seen it shown, you know.
So, who made the motion to continue, the twenty-eighth?
No one yet.
I'll make the motion, I can hang it for...
That was, that was a hint, Tina.
Twenty-third.
Oh, twenty-third, I'm sorry. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Thank you very much.
See you on the eleventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, did you say?
Uh, sure. I know I did, I think Neil did too.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure who did, so...
Next up, you have Colby Road.
Oh, yeah, I can get it up.
Greg, okay, I'm gonna step back down, and I'm in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Cause this one's new altogether.
You're doing such a good job.
Hey, Craig, hold on before you start, I gotta talk to you.
May not be at the next meeting.
I wasn't in a big hurry, Tina, everybody else needs to be here.
I can talk.
All right, I just wanted to let you know.
Well, see, I wanted to be home now.
Way, way, way.
You're over by two minutes.
You're not home yet either, you were a while back.
First summer, yes. That two copies are they both the same?
No, this fight again.
Oh, did I give you the, I may have given you the old one. Or maybe one, maybe one's for Chuck. Cause I made the copies for everybody.
Assuming that Chuck was here.
And if you would like, here's the old site plan. The one that was approved back in eight eleven sixteen.
Which one's that?
I need, I need that back, though.
Was that sheet? This is dated April sixteen, revised twelve twenty-seven sixteen, is that the new one?
The, yeah, that's the new one. But I have the old one as well, if you wanna refer back. Yes, I think now he's coming for the building.
Well, he's also changing the rooms from storing stuff to repairing stuff across the building.
Are you gonna repair?
Hang on, let's get the application.
I know we, we went through that.
You're getting ahead of yourself, we're gonna accept the application as complete, maybe, first.
This is Ramaro, do you want this, it's a large one?
Sure. Has to be changed.
But I'll take it.
The only thing I see that is kinda missing are elevation view slash photographs of the building and cut sheets for the lighting.
Uh, he submitted the cut sheets for the lighting tonight? I think everyone got one, you can have mine.
Did I give one?
I'm sure you did.
He gave one to me, he gave one to you. I don't get anything that you don't get.
And the building has not yet been designed, I think the building is in design stage, as we're dealing with sprinklers and non-sprinklers and smoke walls and things of that nature, so I don't think he can provide an elevation.
There's a whole bunch of, there are two different kinds of lights here. We're only looking at the exterior, which I assume is this, but this looks like an interior.
It is. That's just the cut sheets for everything, well, that's just the lighting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the interior makes a difference.
This is the one for the outside.
I don't have a problem with accepting it, I don't wanna waive the elevation view, cause I wanna see what the building looks like before we approve it, but...
What I'm really here for is just a contingent of the whole, because I've not even done my site work yet on it, but to get a building and order is four or five months to get it. I don't wanna have to wait four or five months to get this thing done, then order it, and now we're into this, middle of summer, end of summer, so, I'm just looking for, yeah, you can put this building on, but it's gotta be, you know, what are requirements you need for the building, which I'm, that stuff I can get pretty quickly, cause the engineer that's doing the building, it was probably six weeks ago I ordered the engineering for it, so he said six to eight weeks I'd have it, so that's all coming, it should be next week or two.
And the fire department and I have both reviewed it, nothing out of the ordinary.
The building?
The building. It's got an overhang on one side, that'll be like a carport drive-through.
How high is the building?
I'm gonna think it's probably twenty-four, twenty-six. The interior height, the lowest point is about twenty, but it's at a really, it's a single slope, I think he said twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-six, it is.
But don't hold me that, I mean, it could be twenty-six and a half, I don't know.
Thirty-foot-high building.
There's no ring, it's just a, it's a single slope.
Thirty's the magic number for Cole.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So, on the checklist, we say number six is shape, size, height, location of existing proposed structures, we can say it's gonna be thirty feet, cause that's the maximum you're allowed to go.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then we can waive the elevation view, as long as, yeah, I can't say waive.
I'll have all that stuff relative, you know...
Right. Accept it as complete, and then say, tell them we still want the elevation, we'll try to sell, to get around it, so we can work on it.
I move that the, accept the application as complete, but note that we require the elevation view of the building.
Thank you. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, this is the same site you had the storage on before.
Yeah, same thing, we just basically moved the building from one spot to the other, and that did change the drainage a little bit, it didn't change the capacity, it just changed the location of the actual trench. In talking to Costello, I talked to him the other day, he said it really, it doesn't change the volume or the flow or the capacities, cause a lot's still the lot.
Is he gonna do compaction tests on that fill for you?
Yeah. I, I think it's a plan for you guys anyway, but I already talked to him about it.
It, it will be from, from my department.
Yeah, yeah. The last time you were here, as I recall, this was gonna be stored.
Yes.
What's gonna happen to all the storage stuff, the vehicles that you were going to store there?
The one that's signed?
This was gonna be indoor storage, is what I was going for. The last time it was outdoor.
Oh, I was talking about storage, not storage, paid storage, I'm gonna have capacity to work.
So, when you have a building, you're gonna have units around it that...
Looks the same as that, he just removed it.
Yeah. My recollection of last time you were concerned was, you, you explained that the industry has changed.
Yes.
And you had to buy a year's worth of vehicles at one time.
Yes.
And you needed someplace to store those, and you were looking to cross one fourteen, and I thought you had said, well, I'll forget that, and this will be my storage lot for those vehicles. Well, I didn't say I, I would forget going to next year, but what we have, we have, and we still have permission to go a little bigger on one that's approved, and I haven't done it, but yeah, but there still will be storage, I mean, the lot size is still a lot size. But with the building, and with the fact that now you need access to the building, and space to store vehicles that are going to be repaired, won't you have a significantly lower storage capacity for vehicles to be sold? No, because the building was already, I was putting the building on here anyways.
He had a future, he had a future building fit on that plane.
But, but what does change is, when you go, when you look at the dealership now, everything on the right, or the, wherever, is storage and stuff, because I have RV service stuff all over the place, so I won't have that at all. So, I'm gonna actually get more storage on my current site, because I'm taking on my service work and putting it elsewhere. What's gonna happen to the current buildings when you do service work? Where are now, nothing, that's the answer. So, this is expanded? Expanded, and this is gonna be strictly service-only, it's not prep work, it's not gonna be, like, we're still gonna work on the building, we're gonna prep new units and ship them out that way, but this is strictly off-site service. Not for your, for your customers? For my customers and anybody else, yeah.
Do you need water in the building? I see you got a well on there.
This is gonna have water, like, you know, sewer, everything, yeah, it's gonna be a full-blown facility, just like I have. The only difference is, this is not a, um, a facility where, you know, it's gotta be bright and look at me, cause no one's gonna see it, it's appointment-only, it's, it's in a rural, it's off the road, you can't see it, and it's gonna be brown, it's gonna be... Can you see it from one fourteen? No, no, you can't even see it from Colby Road, unless you drive and stop and look right, you know, I think, or where, where went the wanderers right now, you can, cause some of the trees are off, but, but it's not one of those things where you need high visibility. I am gonna require a sign to be put, I'll get the permit for that, because I need directional sign to like, turn here, so they can see it. That's the only thing it's gonna say, turn here? No, it's a directional sign for them to basically know where to go, you know, for the name of the building and stuff. We need to see that, the drawings of that. Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
Will customers be dropping off their, their trailers or RVs here, or will they be dropping off at the main site?
Everything that's serviced will be coming here. No service, I mean, they'll probably show up there for a while, till they get, that's not where they go anymore, but that's the intent is to not have service coming in on the dealership at all.
So, the employees aren't gonna be ferrying them from the one fourteen location to the, it'll be the customers being in direct here?
Yeah, yeah. So, there's gonna be a lot more traffic on Colby? What I figure is, the way we have it right now, we do about four and a half to five hours per row, so, we average, let's say, five hours, so that's one, let's call it two a day, we can, our capacity's two a day, we're open six days a week. I'm doing seven bays, I, I don't think I have, and, and I love to fill it with seven people, I don't think I can, cause I still have eight where I'm at, and I'm not even full there, so I don't think, but let's say I could, I, this thing was just rocking, I'd have seven guys here, which is roughly fourteen customers a day on average, and I'll probably have ten people working there, I mean, you're talking a couple, an hour difference. You know, it's not a store, they're not gonna come in and go, and leave for it in five minutes. Is he still obligated to do whatever he had to do? This is all...
Actually, we set the previous group, we're gonna look at this.
You know, for the offices and stuff. We need to. He wants approval for the building now, I don't really give it.
Well, he doesn't. You don't need approval, you, you aren't expecting approval tonight, are you?
Just a condition, just, I wanna know, yeah, get the thing coming, so I don't have to wait months and months, and then I'll meet all yours, all your guidelines, then once I meet him, it will be approved.
Would you talk, just so I can have it in the news?
I'm Scott.
Scott.
Yeah, it's Todd.
I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
Yeah, it's fine. And like, the lighting and stuff on it, we don't work at night, in the fall, four-thirty it's dark, we have, you know, lights go on. Your facility, I'm gonna say it's open from eight to six, we really work eight-thirty to five, but I'm gonna say eight to six, cause the window, Monday through Friday, Saturday, eight-thirty till five. And all, every light on the entire facility exterior is motion only, there's not gonna be any lights on, cause there's no reason to light it up, because... So, if a deer comes by, the light goes on? It can.
So, you're not worried about people coming in here at night?
If they do, it'll turn motion, but I'm gonna have a gate to, to protect the building itself.
Oh, I see gate posts. I see, I see posts, yes.
Uh, we don't have the gate, I gotta get the gate guy to kinda look and see where he can put one of the stuff, so he hasn't even looked at it yet.
If a customer drops off a Class A, and they're living, how would you handle that?
If they're what?
If they live in that, they're a full-timer. Are they going to stay, are they gonna be sleeping in their RV on that property?
Uh, they can, they, you know, they can, any dealership, they'll stay overnight in it, or they'll stay in Lankos Park Mall, but I don't know, but... But we, we can't work on stuff that they're, and we do work on stuff they're living in, but I can't have them like, living on a property and working this out, I can't facilitate that, like, spending the night, I, we can do that, but I don't have facilities for them to stay there, we have a campground next door.
Yeah.
That they can put it in, so, you know.
I remember, on the previous approval, we said we wanted, we wanted to look at this hundred-foot buffer.
Yeah.
So, I think we need a site walk, I'd like to look at the wetland buffer as well, around that little...
Well, the wetland's all delineated, it's all flagged by car, so, actually, the whole site now, if you walked it, I had Art flag the whole thing.
Okay.
The front to back, it's all, anywhere this is, it's clearly marked, all flagged, the wetland is all marked out by car, um, so you guys can go down and whatever, it's, it's clearly marked. In the site work, we're not done yet, we're, we're probably four to five feet from grade, so we're still putting dirt on there, but we had a stop back in December.
What's not showing on here, wasn't on the last one? All the film material is coming up from this novel over here, right?
Uh, on the back property, yeah.
Yeah.
Where?
Where this...
Over here?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I think we need to show that. Takes the limits of the excavation area?
Show what it's gonna look like when it's done, you mean, after we put all that dirt in there?
Over here, when you take it out.
Yeah, what it's gonna, okay, yeah, I can run through that.
Well, how's he getting, how are you, how are you getting across the wetland and through the buffer?
There's no wetland there, that was Art, when he put it in there.
Shows the wetland?
No, Art put it in there, because he said, well, I covered my butt, I said, Art, I've lived there since I was a kid, and that's been a road to Billy Bowe Bear since I was a kid, and it's on Google Maps, if you look at it, it's a road, it's not, it does, there is a wetland, but it's been a road forever, and... You walked there?
We did?
Not for his application, but I think it was when we were doing Bowe Bear.
That's up the road.
That's up the road.
That's not this?
No.
Sorry.
That's, that's a different Bowe Bear property here, the three lot.
But that road to the other property has been, it's been there for, the only thing I will need, if I do cross that with like, a transfer for water or something, if we were to relocate the well, cause I'm, we're a little concerned about the well, does what was there before?
Yes.
We're really thinking of maybe putting it on the other property, just to be safe. The same aquifer?
Yeah, further away helps.
I'm gonna talk to the well guys, it probably is.
A little further away.
Yeah.
A little further away helps.
I don't, I don't think the deal, stuff that's there is leaching that way, I think it's leaching that way.
So.
You don't know what you're gonna.
Talking about that, how does he put in a leach field on top of a dump site?
Oh, no, no, this, this isn't the dump site.
No, dump, dump site's over here.
The dump site is owned by the Ware Winter Wanderers.
Yeah.
So there was never any, never anything of dangerous nature?
Nothing we know of.
Put underneath the building or wherever he's gonna have his leach?
Nothing we know of.
Well, they did a, um, I have it somewhere, they did test pits to delineate where the actual dump was, which is strictly on that other property, that's why he cut it off and gave it to them, to take it out of this property. But when we're over here, where the building's going, that was untouched land. On the other part, we were filling it in, it was, it was like a few pieces of metal in, that was it, it was pretty clean. Except for whatever hard you put in there, which was concrete and stuff, but that wasn't from the dump. And sign approval.
We just wanna do a site walk early in eleven, while we're doing the other one.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Not that far away from each other.
No, they aren't.
Just the other side of town. Not really.
The other side of town is my house.
That must be five miles.
Well.
Well, probably that, yeah, but where's?
Where's long?
Instead of the size of, that's the size of where, that's the neighbors.
Say, ten o'clock, or ten thirty? I don't think it'll take you an hour and a half over it.
I say ten thirty.
It depends on how many, how many comments are made by, by the public. Actually, are we accepting public comment to that?
No, it's a site walk.
But it's a public meeting.
I say ten thirty.
It's a public meeting, but not a public hearing.
They can be there and listen, they're not really excited, any comments, no.
Gotcha, okay.
Generally, Craig has been very accepting if anybody wanted to say anything, but there's no.
We don't have to.
It's not like the public hearing we had tonight, where a person had a right to come and testify.
Okay.
Plus you're taking notes, and you don't want too many.
I'm gonna be the one taking notes, I seem to get stuck with that duty.
That's good, Neil shows up two minutes late, so you have to take those.
That's planned, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Never.
Anybody from public have any comments? Seeing nothing, we close the public hearing.
That was at ten thirty, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Immediately after the other one. Maybe a cup of coffee in between.
Do I meet you for that, or you just do it on your own, or what?
I don't know what to do.
It'd be, it'd be nice if you were there to show us around.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Do you wanna take a note, so you can tell Art what he's gonna do?
No.
Um, what does he have to do for that?
I have to post these times.
Just.
If you go from nine o'clock at one.
The borough pick, where you're getting the third one?
And you get to the next one at nine forty-five or ten o'clock. And I posted it for ten thirty, you gotta sit around and wait.
So why don't you post it for ten?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
And if we're late, that's, that's not a problem.
I mean, we'll fit on this, we're planning on here, and fit on this second.
Should I have ten or ten thirty?
She just wanna know what it's gonna be like when we're done.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can.
And then you're gonna swap it and seed it, that kinda thing.
When we're done with it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he's in California, but he, he has guys that are working on here, so, yeah. Now, if it can't be done by eleven?
Then broken was at nine, correct?
Who should I let know if he can't have it done by then?
Well, he doesn't need to have that done by then, but he'll need to have that done.
For the next meeting?
For the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Which will be the twenty-third.
Were there, wasn't there other notes we had on the other one for the seeding and so forth?
Yeah, we did.
There was a whole bunch of things.
They should, they should be on this one.
It doesn't look like he fixed on this one. The trench description, install fifteen foot wide by five foot high stone trench?
Well, I looked, the one I signed, it said deep.
Yeah, what it is, it's.
Would you make sure that Art transfers the, the correct notes from the first approval to this one?
Yeah, I actually have the detail though, for the trench, that I can get from cost out.
No, it wasn't that, it was just this.
What, what I would do is take all that stuff off of this one, and say, say that the grading is per the previous approved site plan, and grading, erosion control, and everything else is per the previous approved plan. And forget it on this one, we're, but we're showing a building.
Okay.
We're not designing a fill slope, we're showing a building.
Okay.
The drainage hasn't changed, the grading.
Well, the drainage changed from the prior approval, though, that's why I had it on here. It didn't change capacity, but it changed the location, and it basically, we did this, the building was.
Okay, oh, that's right, the building was over here.
So it did change.
Right.
Which changed all the grades for pitch and everything to that catch basements.
But that trench is essentially the same spot, isn't it?
I don't, I don't think.
I think, I think.
Probably, yeah.
I thought the trench was over here more.
Well, no, because the building was right there, I think, I don't know, it was a while ago.
You know, Chip, Chip would have given us that, would give me that approved plan, we'd know, but he didn't.
I didn't feel like it, because someone wasn't courteous and called it back.
I'm pretty sure it was like this, though.
Yeah, I think it was too, I think, I think the trench was over here more.
It was in the front of the building instead of the back, yeah.
Should this plan show proposed parking lot, parking spots?
You should have employee parking places shown on it.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
What about an area delineated for, for the storage?
Well, the storage is already approved, that's up front, that's not, that's already there. Like, if you drive, if you look for the plan on the right, where it says, on the left is the entrance, that's all storage right there, it's, it goes all the way down to the, as far as.
You aren't gonna store over top of the drainage system in the back?
What's that?
You aren't gonna store vehicles in the back of the building?
Yeah, that's gonna be storage for, well, I think I'm gonna go storage, because the stuff that's going in bay and out of the bay, like, incoming work and outgoing work.
Oh, the.
So you're driving through the building?
Drive-through bay.
Well, no, it's not, when you look at the, coming in from the road, that overview, that overhang?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a, um, one hundred and seventy-two feet long by twenty-four wide, it's basically a drive-through, um, airport. So they're gonna bring them in, they're gonna drop them, then the customer leaves, we'll take them from there. We're gonna pull them around, we'll sta, we'll station them all across the, that side of it, so that they can bring it into the service base, and when those are done, they'll pull it out and put them in the parking, which is probably gonna be toward the Ware Went to Wanderer side.
Where's your overhead doors?
Um, everything is facing that trench side.
So the, oh, the doors are on the.
Yeah, so like, wherever, yeah, because when you're, this is residential, this house on this side, our building is gonna be facing the opposite side. So all work will be done toward the, toward Bowe Bear's land.
So I think we need to see a traffic pattern and employee parking on here.
Okay.
Just to have a general idea of how you're trying to get around.
Sure.
Do you understand this?
The lights?
Yes.
I believe that what these crazy little numbers here are, are the amount of lumens that are being directed from these overhead lights.
Where are the lights?
All those little.
Running right down the middle of the, the building.
Something that we approve of.
No.
No, we don't care about, we don't care about the inside.
Oh, we have a cut sheet for the exterior?
Yes, that's it.
But I think on that plan, though, I think that, I, the reason I get that here, if you, I think, those are the lights on the outside.
These at the front?
You only show two lights.
No, the ones you had your finger on, the front page, you said.
Yeah, and it's gonna be lights pretty much around the perimeter, so if someone goes by there, it's gonna.
Well, that's what I thought, you showed seven lights here, and there's only two here.
Okay, that's.
That's what I thought at first.
Okay, that's not, this is from the lighting company, that's Art just putting lights on the thing.
What's in here?
That's gonna be the offices, isn't it?
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna have seven lights on here.
We're gonna have one in front of each bay.
Right.
And, but those aren't gonna be the, they're gonna be just motion lights again.
Where, where is twenty-four by one hundred and seventy-two foot drive-in?
Um.
On this side or this side?
Well, I look at.
Where are the doors for the bays?
If, well, this is gonna be facing the trench side, so that's bay, that's the bay.
So this is the overhang?
No, I don't think it is, I think the overhang is right here. Because it's gonna look like this, this is gonna, this is the building now, are gonna be now, and, um, the overhang is gonna be on the Colby was this week, it's gonna be on the front.
And this hard line is the footprint, I would guess.
And there are no doors here?
So this is.
There's one entrance door, but no, no.
No vehicle doors.
No.
And so, one of your guys takes this, drives around the back, and then comes in here.
Yes.
Got it.
And park stuff here, which is staged, so that, that comes out, that goes in.
And you don't, you don't, in your business, you don't have a drive-through bay, or is that easier?
No, not really, because then they can't put a toolbox in there.
Yeah.
Because if you put them in the middle, and where the slides and stuff, it turns into, there's no room, so, drive-throughs in this won't work as well.
So you need to revise the lights in the plan?
On his plan, yeah.
Yes.
Just the exterior, is right?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't care about inside.
Okay.
Do whatever you want to inside, that's, that's somebody else's problem.
Yep.
Is it possible we get the cut sheet to go out a little further? Because you're showing, uh, one lumen going away from the building. How far is the, you know what I mean?
How far is the light projected?
Right.
I am sure they can.
But these are downward-facing lights.
Well, I got point seven someplace out here, I don't have a scale on this, but is it point seven here, or is it point seven here? We got a residential thing to worry about over there.
They need to scale this. This is a, this is a ten-foot overhang.
To your residential neighbors.
You've got a ten-foot overhang?
Uh, twenty-four.
Twenty-four? So if that's twenty-four feet, from there to there, this is up against the building, and this is, looks like probably twelve feet out.
And that's more than, that's forty feet or so out, so back in here, you got twenty, you got one lumen shining towards these other people. Maybe.
Is the drainage trench, is it there?
Well, yeah, there's no building out here, these are the lights that are on the wall, and that's, those are the lumens that are coming away from the building.
I thought this was the back of the wall.
Maybe five feet left to go on somewhere.
And these are exterior lights, along here.
The, yeah, these are the exterior lights, but I think this is the drive-through.
Right, right, but we got point seven lumens right there. Somewhere in here. This is all going down, what's gonna happen over here?
And you got eleven out there. You got fourteen over here.
What's gonna happen over here?
Over where?
Over here.
On the neighboring property.
Probably nothing, but just expand this a little bit, it would tell us nothing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Where the neighboring property is, though, there's no, the lights are underneath the overhang.
The question is, how far does the, the light extend, and how? Because you're up twenty.
I, I know your light's not gonna get on the neighbors, I, I, I know that, but if you can just expand this.
I can.
Because I can expand this pretty simple, I know it's.
They just, um, LED, four LEDs under there anyway.
I have a question about your, uh, your gate posts. What kind of gate are you putting there?
I'm not putting a gate there, that's existing from, um, before.
Okay, so.
That's just what's there from.
Okay, so there will be no, there'd be no gates installed on, you said?
The only thing we're maybe doing, and I don't know if I'm, I, I don't wanna do this unless I need to, is where the building is, to the Ware Went to Wanderer side, put a fence gate, and then to the other side, just to protect the backyard, which is where the stuff's gonna be.
Okay, my only concern was from a life safety standpoint, if you have a customer that tries to steal their, their leather, their leather that fire and, and risk, you can get there if they have to.
There's a Knox box on the gate now.
Yeah, and, and they wouldn't be in that part of the building, because that's where customer stuff is, they'd be outside.
Okay.
But, yeah. And, and I may not fence it, I mean, we haven't had theft and burglary, uh, if I don't need to, I won't.
Yeah.
But you never know.
Any other questions? Comments? So does that, somebody, somebody can make a motion to continue?
Do that, make, make a motion to continue on the twenty-third.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, seen? See you on the site walk, whatever day, whatever it is.
Ten.
Ten.
Oh, yeah.
We, we might be a little late, we, we figured if we're a little late, you're the only one probably gonna be there, so it's, rather than us waiting for a half hour to start when nobody's gonna show up.
Do you want this to be chucked?
Chucked.
Was John still voting or? So I, what was that?
You voted, but it didn't count, four zero.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it had a count, man.
Yep.
That's what I thought, but I went up right in the record.
My floor is becoming a disaster, just Chuck took my desk. Okay, now we got a lot line adjustment for Timothy Farmer on seventeen Waterman Road. I never heard of.
They were to fill all line adjustment a couple of months ago.
The road?
Yeah, same place.
Boy. Oh, yeah.
When you weren't paying attention.
I remember this now. This is very confusing, it was before.
Lots of little lots.
Yeah.
Is this so your father can park his boat?
Maybe.
Maybe. Just found to put the canoe in the garage.
So we have a waiver for topo. Didn't actually see the waiver, but. Either way, we need a waiver for topo.
I think it's there.
There it is. Topo soils and wetlands.
The saving paper.
Yeah, I don't understand, I understand that.
Is it complete?
Except for the waiver, yes. Topo wetland soils.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move we grant a waiver on the application of Mr. Farmer, Timothy G. Farmer, Rep. of the Trust, for topographic math for.
I missed right off the top. That's all I saw on the checklist, the waiver request includes wetlands and soils.
Wetlands and soil, reading, topographic wetlands and soil.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, I, okay, opposed, subsisting? Did you vote Chuck?
No, I'm not voting.
Oh, I'm gonna re, re, reappoint John again.
Aye.
Okay.
I move we accept the application as complete.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seen? Okay, Mr. Farmer, what are we trying to do here?
So, um, there's basically three lots that I own, uh, the one that I live on.
Which one's that?
Which, yeah, which one's that?
That is lot, one of, the biggest one, one oh, one oh one dash sixty.
Okay.
So I'm proposing to take lot one oh one dash fifty-nine and, um, subdivide it, and put part of it onto my residence. And part of it onto my, to another piece of property that I bought, on the brook slash lake.
At lot fifty-seven?
Yes. So I'm essentially gonna make lot fifty-seven a little bit bigger and my residence a little bit bigger and get rid of a lot that's in between. That did have a trailer on it, and I downloaded that this past summer.
Okay. What's the access that lot C will have?
Um, the.
Lot fifty-seven?
The, the right-of-way, and you'll see a shaded area there that's proposed, um, lot easement, and I have that done.
Is that easement existing?
It is now.
So you have an easement over lot one oh one eighty-two, Gary J. Cody?
Exactly.
Do you have a copy of this?
I don't have a copy of it.
And, and this is an existing easement?
Uh, it is now.
Very recently, yes.
It just, it just happened a couple of weeks ago.
How, didn't you need an easement before?
Um. Gary Cody lives on one side of the brook. It doesn't really show the brook here.
Yeah.
But right, um, wherever the driveway comes in off of Waterman Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a brook that runs right down along that with two steep banks. And I live on one side and Gary lives on the other, and I've lived there for thirty years and I never realized that he owned up onto that bank as far as he did. I thought, I honestly thought that it was the center of the brook that was the property line. I just never knew that. So I put the road in when we tore the, uh, mobile home down and had Art survey it. He said, did you know that you put the right-of-way on your neighbor's property? And I said, no. So I visited with the Codys and they allowed me to have an easement, which we've recorded.
So before you were using this, thinking it was yours, and that was your access?
Well, we, this all happened this, this summer.
Well, how'd, how'd you get to the trailer before?
Uh, the right-of-way, you can see where the right-of-way used to go. Um, let's see, so the right-of-way came in and it went this way.
Oh, okay.
So basically, I moved it away from my house. The right-of-way came right in front of my house, and I just ran it along the bank. This is basically a bank that goes down to the brook. And this little section here, I didn't realize.
Didn't realize it wasn't yours.
Wasn't.
So basically, you're taking lot fifty-nine, draw a line down middle level, giving parcel B to your house lot and parcel C to lot fifty-seven.
Exactly. And the, the property that Cody owns that he gave me the easement on is, there's nothing he can do with it, cause it's a, it's a tiny sliver that's just barely wide enough to put a driveway on.
Is, is the new lot fifty-seven buildable?
It's, it's an existing lot.
It's an existing lot, and it already has the state approved subject system on it. I bought it before, um, Don Mur built on it, cause I didn't wanna build on it.
But you could sell it.
Yeah, I'm not going to.
No, no, I understand that, but it is a buildable lot.
Yep.
Okay. And it's gonna be taxed as such, I assume.
Yep.
And the fact that he, and is there a problem making that buildable that it's accept, accessed by an easement or not?
No more than it's being accessed through a private road.
Yeah, that's a, essentially.
I was just making sure it wasn't a shared easement, I don't see it as much.
It is a shared driveway, yes. Um, it comes right down.
His existing house and then that lot.
And also.
You can have two.
Right, that's what he's using it for, is two. He may have to do another easement.
Yes, an agreement.
That's lot one agreement, uh, a drive, shared driveway agreement. Even though you own both lots, we've been requiring all common driveways, all shared driveways, do a driveway agreement for the two lots.
And a hold harmless.
Yes.
So I need to do the easement with who?
It's a shared driveway agreement between you and you.
Between the two lot owners.
Which are, which are you.
Okay.
That lot fifty-seven and your lot, uh, sixty.
And what does it say?
And does he need a hold harmless or?
That Tim agrees with Tim, that Tim maintains it?
Well, I think, I think in my existing, um, in the, if you look back in the existing, um.
I see here, you know, it says ten-foot right-of-way, is that the?
Yeah, so that, that used to cross on my land, came in my driveway, uh, on my residence, I should say.
Which it still does.
Which it still does, and, and it used to completely stay on my residence. Um, and now I've just divided it, moved it over a tiny bit so that it's now, uh, on, it goes from my property to Cody's property to the property which will become lot fifty-seven. The, the, most of the right-of-way will be on that lot.
Once it leaves, your lot and goes on to Cody's, your lot sixty, it doesn't come back on to your lot sixty.
No.
Then it goes right onto that lot fifty-seven.
Right.
Is, is the shop building constructed or not?
The what?
There's a building here that says shop with storage on both sides.
Oh, that's my garage, yes.
That exists.
That exists, yeah. Yeah, that was there when I bought the property in nineteen eighty-eight.
So what is, why are the plan reference numbers there?
That's just, uh, Art used those plans during his research and survey work. That's, that's probably created the lots, I assume. Normally, I don't put them there.
Is there a language in your deed that spells out that ten-foot right-of-way, you're gonna give it? For the benefit of the lot. I assume it's for the benefit of the lot fifty-nine and fifty-seven.
Correct.
And now it's just gonna be fifty-seven.
Fifty-nine will go away.
And you get to your house. Are you using the Cody easement?
No.
For, to get to your house. You're not using it strictly for that of a lot?
Yep.
So the lot in which your house is located is landlocked. You don't have access to the ri, to the lake or the brook, right?
I do not.
But if you wanted to go swimming, you could go on lot fifty-seven, because then you have access to both the brook and the lake.
Or I could go on fifty-three, which I also own, which is waterfrontage. It's contiguous with my other land.
Where's fifty-three? Got it. And is there access to fifty-three by easement or something, or no?
Um, yeah, there's actually access through this right-of-way and also through my parents' driveway, which they own lot fifty-two.
Got it.
That's the, that's access from both, both easements.
Want a motion?
Well, I think we want a shared driveway agreement.
How about approval subject to share driveway agreement?
I just wanna point out something first. Looking at your, your easement deed. Not that I'm a lawyer, but it seems pretty strange to me. It starts out a driveway easement ten feet in width, then it describes this thing that's about fifty feet wide. That seems a little strange.
Uh, the driveway is only ten feet wide, though.
But the easement's fifty feet wide. The driveway easement is described being.
I think that's just the size of the property. Which I pass through.
I think I know what you're saying, but it's not worded that way in here. The driveway easement ten feet in width is what it says, how it starts.
Yeah, it looks like the driveway easement, at the widest point there is probably thirty feet wide.
Well, yeah, but then it says beginning at a point lying fifty-three feet, and it gives a bearings distance around this thing, and that's almost fifty feet wide.
That has to be Drescher for approval.
It's already, it's already recorded.
Yeah, but we got another one from this guy.
I, I think it ought to be reviewed.
Recorded and Drescher's pulling his hair out.
We can always do a corrective warranty deed. Corrective, corrective warranty easement deed. I think we, um, the three things I can see, right off the top of my head, well, only three things. Better stop, better stop right there. Only four things I can see. I think we need a shared driveway agreement between lot sixty and fifty-seven. The map should be check. Drescher should review the existing recorded warranty easement deed. To see if he thinks it.
So can I just interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Um, on lot sixty, there already is an easement on that lot for the driveway to get to fifty-seven.
So that's all in that, one of the little ten-foot right-of-way note there? Is that what that's supposed to mean?
Yes.
Wow, it sure would be nice to say more than that. How about an expansion of the existing ten-foot right-of-way note to say that it, whatever it says, whatever the book and page says.
Well.
Access to lot fifty-seven is through a ten-foot right-of-way as recorded in such and such a book and page or something. Other than just saying ten-foot right-of-way.
But that ten-foot right-of-way is two other lots I'd like to use that too, right? Your other lot on the lake and then father's.
No, not my father's.
What about the, um, Busi, is there? Even Chase and Kathleen Busi? Miss, Miss Sauer, Miss Everly?
Yeah, that, yeah, Steve Chase. Basically, Steve Chase, which is lot fifty-six, lot fifty-seven, and lot fifty-three have a deed at right-of-way. Yep. And then lot fifty-three has a right-of-way also through, uh, Adrian Pennard's right-of-way off of Waterman Road. Uh, Reservoir Drive, excuse me, which is also the access to my father's.
Oh, okay, he, so he comes down this other driveway.
Right.
Okay. Are you relocating the right-of-way for those other two lots too?
Well, yeah, the, the, the existing right-of-way that was there is gone. It's grass now.
So you relocated it for Steve and Chase and that other lot fifty-three also?
Right. I mean, lot fifty-three is basically a boathouse. That's the property that I bought first.
Yep.
I bought the house behind it lot sixty, second, and even though they're not lot line adjusted, they're really a contiguous lot.
Art, do the brief. What's the name of your job of showing it to the board?
Let's back up. We've got a driveway coming in off Reservoir Drive that goes through Pennard's property, goes to Farmer Family Trust on lot fifty-two. Also uses, goes to your revocable trust lot fifty-three and also being used by Chase at lot fifty-six. Is that correct?
It doesn't go to revocable.
No, it doesn't go to Chase.
Okay, it only goes to revocable tr, it doesn't go to your revocable trust either, fifty-three?
It does.
Okay, so Chase accesses from Waterman through your house lot?
Yes.
So you're saying Chase now has to cross through this easement you got, whenever it was, January?
And he's, it's relocated on lot fifty-seven. But actually, is it relocated on lot fifty-seven? Because.
Well, currently, currently it's relocated on lot fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Which I want to turn into fifty-seven.
We need Drescher to look at all this access stuff for fifty-six, fifty-seven and out to Waterman. Because, just cause you moved the road and just because you have permission to use this little piece from Cody, doesn't mean that Chase has permission to use that little piece from Cody.
Are the numbers for these recordings anywhere on there?
Does Chase have one of those pieces?
Uh, no, I mean.
You know what I mean?
I think, yeah.
Chase has rights to drive through your lot.
He has, he still has in his deed that he has access through my lot.
Right. So technically, you eliminated his access through your lot.
Even though you give it somewhere else, you eliminated what his deed says.
He built something that Chase isn't allowed to use, technically. I think. From understanding what you're saying. Chase, Chase is allowed to use a road through your lot sixty.
I created a new right-of-way which Chase is allowed to use.
No, if you, if the lawyer goes to Chase's title, he doesn't have no rights to use this right-of-way.
The Cody one.
Okay.
If Chase is seller of property, the new buyer has no rights to use this piece, use the.
Alright, so I need to do something with Chase.
Before you do something with Chase, I think we ought to have Drescher look at this, make sure you're doing it the way you, it should be done, cause your attorney should have caught that. And it doesn't make any, the, the whole birding and that, I'm, I'm, don't understand why the easement's worded the way it is. The driveway easement ten feet in width, and then you put bearings and distances around something that's a lot wider than ten feet. That doesn't make any sense to me, still. But either way, you have to, Cody's gonna have to, okay, Chase is gonna have to release the other easement technically to help you out, so whoever buys his place doesn't have the rights to drive through your yard, and then you can grant him the new easement. And it should be a shared driveway agreement. It's a long time with Drescher.
This be handled in two steps, Greg, and the revocable lot line adjustment, and then the shared driveway issue handled separately.
Yeah, the shared driveway should be shown a little clearer, and it's really a little muddled.
There, there should be some notes on here saying that the one's gonna be released and the other one's gonna be granted.
And that both Chase and lot fifty-three have rights to use it.
I'm still trying to figure out the best way to handle it, just to be honest with you.
You're gonna get to explain it to Drescher.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah, like Chip just said, I'm gonna have to explain it to Drescher. That's gonna be.
Is he, does it explain the driveway in there by meets and bounds?
In the deed?
Yeah.
Yeah. On the, on the, on the dotted triangle.
And those, but that's all it is, that, that dotted triangle is all he's describing?
Yes.
The ten-foot wide driveway easement that's on Chase's deed or your other lot, is that described? Is it, just say ten-foot driveway easement wherever it goes, or is it described with?
It just says ten-foot right-of-way to their property. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I don't know for sure what the conversation was that we had with my attorney, but I'm pretty sure he said that all we needed to do was to get the easement from Cody, and everybody else would still, whatever their deed said, would be acceptable.
Well, yeah, Chase has the rights to drive through your property. Past your house.
But not Cody's?
No.
Same thing with your other lot, your boathouse lot?
Why, why do we care as a board about that?
It would allow him essentially to give up that existing driveway.
He's primarily in case, even though, even though you have no intention of doing it, if something changed ownership.
Well, yeah, if you sell your property, Chase sell his property, and these two people don't get along, all of a sudden, Chase, Chase is.
He's all cutting trees, crossing land to get his driveway back or something.
The only question is, why do we care?
We're, we're concerned with, with whether the, the lots have access, and the only concern is the removing that lot line.
Yeah, but he's relocating two other people's access on somebody else's land that he doesn't even own.
What do you mean, he's relocating it?
He's trying to relocate Chase's access.
But he can't unless Chase agrees.
Correct.
Chase is going to have the right to go through his property.
Correct.
And, and.
The driveway's gone.
He, he destroyed the dri, he destroyed the driveway.
Well, if he destroyed the driveway, Chase isn't doing anything about it, that's Chase's problem. But I don't understand why we as a board are concerned about.
He has a deed at right-of-way through my property.
Yeah, but that triangle piece from that Cody owns, he doesn't have a right to use.
If I decided to sell this property and, um, Cody got upset that I was selling it, or Chase got upset.
The problem is if Cody sells his property, and somebody doesn't like more than two cars a day driving across it, then he finds out, and he'll look and figure out Chase doesn't have a right to use it.
But Chase doesn't.
That's what the problem was. No, it doesn't.
Chase would have a right to go over Tim's property.
Right.
Lot sixty.
So I changed the right, right-of-way back. I mean, Chase will, Chase will always have a right-of-way across my property.
I don't disagree with you, Bruce, but isn't that his issue, not this board's?
I don't know. I mean, we're, we're letting them make a change of the plan. Effectively.
I mean, Chase has a deed at right-of-way across my property.
They're not showing across here anywhere that deed is right-of-way that Chase has. It's gone.
Well, I was gonna say, in that case, we have to show Chase's deed at right-of-way on the plan.
Right.
Because Chase doesn't have the right to use this. Cause it says on, on the easement, it's only for your benefit. You can't deed Chase an easement over top of your easement, cause you don't have the right to do that. You need to go to Cody to get a different easement from him to give Chase the benefit to use an easement.
I understand. So if Cody agrees to give Chase the easement to cross the land, then that's all I need to do?
Well, no.
That would protect you.
Yeah, that'd protect you.
You have a lot there, lot fifty-three, you really need to get a separate easement for that lot.
I'm really not worried about that lot. It's, it's never gonna be sold separately from any of the other property.
Then why not?
Taxes.
No, why not eliminate the line?
Merge, merge it.
Yeah, why don't you merge it into one lot?
Because I think it'll, cause then I'll have waterfrontage for a very large piece of land.
Maybe.
And my taxes will go up.
What? Wouldn't you save that? Wouldn't you save it?
No.
No.
No, this is unbuildable.
That's the only reason I haven't done a lot line adjustment all these years.
That lot is unbuildable.
That lot has a boathouse cabin on it, and that's all it can ever be built on. If it burns down, I'm all done.
So your taxes are based on?
Unbuildable lot.
An unbuildable lot.
Right.
But aren't your taxes? Oh, I see. And that's the buildable lot that has waterfrontage. If you took the line away, now your beautiful house would have a lot of waterfrontage. And the whole thing.
Right.
And you're sure of that?
Yes.
You checked with the assessor?
I don't doubt it.
I understand.
I mean, that, that driveway, that piece of property does not, I don't care, I mean, it's my property. I don't care if it has a right-of-way. I mean, that, that driveway, that piece of property does not, I don't care, I mean, it's my property. I don't care if it has a right of way anywhere. I, all I care about is to make sure that Chase has a proper right of way and that lot fifty-seven has a proper right of way.
And what I wanna make sure of is this plan shows the accesses and encumbrances on your property correctly. Because right now, the way I understand it, there's a right of way over top of your property that's not shown on this map. To Chase's.
And to fifty-seven.
And, and to fifty.
No, no one's shown fifty-seven or something.
You can see it.
Well, fifty-seven probably has the same one.
Yeah. You can maybe see it a little bit better on the bigger one. So, this is Waterman Road.
Yep.
This is my driveway. The driveway used to go here.
Yes. And that's a new one.
And this is the new one, which I made the mistake of going across Gary's land. He gave me an easement. It comes down. I wanna subdivide this property here. Put this under this and this under that. So this right of way will be on lot fifty-seven.
Right. The driveway.
Excuse me, the driveway.
Yeah, and you need to kind of show, probably show this with the dash lines, but someone will benefit from this law.
Right, it goes right to his lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think what Greg is saying is that this is missing.
This is, this, legally, this still exists.
Right.
For you and him.
Right, and that needs to be shown on this map.
I would prefer it be discontinued and
Well.
everybody gets a new corrective warranty deed.
But that's up to Tim, not us.
Yes.
And, I mean, I've explained this all to Steve Chase and he was fine with it and, I mean.
Oh, I don't doubt that he is.
His family has been there longer than I have.
He probably, probably has a nicer driveway now.
Yeah, he has a very nice driveway.
More likely. Except legally, he's not allowed to use it.
Well, he has a legal, he has a deed of right of way through my land.
Over here.
Yeah, so if this, for some reason, he couldn't use it, I would have to put another road in.
He didn't have the rights to use the other one.
Which is why this needs to appear.
That, that has to show up here. Not trying, not trying to be.
But if you get Cody to grant the same easement that he granted to you to Chase, then, then you could grant him an easement for that second, and he's good.
Okay.
Please to have it reviewed by Drescher first.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who Drescher is, but.
Drescher is the town attorney.
Okay.
It'd be nice if this was blown up so it was thirty scale or something, so you could see it.
Yeah.
But I know that would be a mess to do now.
Do you know historically who the genius was who created this patchwork of lots down there?
Lucille Waterman.
And what was the thinking?
Uh, it was all cow pasture, and when they dammed the lake and, and made it a lake, she lost a lot of her field. So she started selling off postage stamp sized lots to pay her taxes.
Along the lake?
Along the lake, yeah. So she sold one to the Nichols family, which is what my parents purchased. Um, Wendell Coben had a small lot in there which got eaten up by, I think, the Nichols. Um, Mildred Hall owned the place that I have, number fifty-three on the lake. I bought that from her. Um, I believe the Chases have owned fifty-six for, they bought it from Lucille Waterman.
But she didn't, why didn't she, um, put in a road or create a road or? That's not the way they did it then?
It was a six-foot walkway to access.
She was trying to make money. She wasn't trying to build a road.
Before cars?
Uh, this was in the forties.
Oh.
Yeah. So it went from a six-foot walkway to a ten-foot driveway.
Those cars, well, people get out there and start fattening up. Very much season to throw a little more gravel in.
Right. So it sounds to me like I need to go back to my attorney and get Cody to give Chase an easement. And then, um, write something up between my right of way to me and Chase.
If I understand it right, one, the existing access easement, I didn't write that word down. For Cody, or, jeez. For Chase and you. Meaning lot fifty-seven. Needs to be extinguished. Then, all simultaneously, of course. Then the easement from Cody has to be granted to you and Chase. Then you have to grant an easement to Chase.
Get the relocation on the road.
Through, through lot fifty-seven. I would like to see a rebar also set at the, which way, north? Where I saw. At the end of the forty-foot strip, wherever that is. How do I describe it?
What, a brush mark?
Where, where the driveway easement shown, it says twenty feet, and then there's a little crow's foot in the end of that line, said north eighty-three, eighty, twenty-three oh six east, forty feet.
Yep. Oh, at the edge of the easement.
No, at the corner.
At the corner of the lot.
Yes.
Right by the, right above the end.
Yes, right above. Do you mind if I write on it?
Nope, not at all.
Right there.
Okay. That's almost in the brook, but we can find it.
There's some brook you can do an offset.
If it's in the brook, you, you put one up, you say, say the brook is here and there.
If you didn't, or didn't have to fall around, but this is basically the lake at here.
Hmm.
And then this is a brook that comes through this land and comes along up to here.
How much is this frontage? Looks very small.
It is very small. Thirty feet maybe, forty feet.
Your frontage is from here to here? That's gonna be about, yeah, four plus, twenty-four plus fifteen. Plus eleven. Not very far. Maybe fifty. And the deed from Cody to you and Chase, trying to get these names right, should say it's a corrective, it shouldn't rescind this one.
Okay.
Just to make sure there's no ambiguity there too. And yes, I'm gonna have to go talk to Mr., or call Mr. Drescher.
And when I get the copy of that, I will send it to Mr. Drescher.
All right, so in order to get the lot line adjustment, what do I need to do? All the legal stuff for the right of way?
Yes, and that rebar, and that pin set.
Okay.
It's an IPP, iron pin set.
Is there any time issue here?
Well, I'd like to have it.
Before April first?
Yeah.
It should be all right. January, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Want a motion to continue?
I think so, yes.
And to when? How long will it take to do this?
Shouldn't take more than a month.
So the twenty-third?
Yep.
Now, when you say it shouldn't take more than a month, you, with the town attorney?
If your attorney does a decent job, it shouldn't take that long.
Okay.
If not, it's gonna be so close that we can if we have draft documents at hand, it's just fine tuning. We could probably conditionally approve it to make sure that.
Could, could you give me, uh, a want list from the town attorney of exactly what you want me to do? I mean, I think I understand it. But I just wanna make sure that if I hire my attorney to do this again, that I don't have to go back a third time.
Yeah, something could be lost when they translate.
Yes.
Want the attorney to call you?
No, because I don't know what all he wants in it, so I'd better call Drescher first and have Drescher call him. Right?
Yep. Is it all right for our attorney to contact?
I'll let Rob, I'll let Rob know. It's Rob Howard and Hannah. I think it's on there, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on numbers there too.
Yep.
Move that we, um.
Do you have a blank one of these? It's like eleven by seventeen?
I should have one.
Well, if that works, yeah. I'm just thinking I can, I can scan this and send it to.
Well, there should be an eleven by seventeen.
I know there should be.
Where are we?
I'm all right. I can do with this. I can, I can stick in the copier, shrink it down, and then put in the other one, make a PDF for all of you. I can do it.
Move we continue this matter until our meeting of February twenty-third.
Do we have a second? Oh, Bruce, second. Discussion. Just for pregnant pause. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
I'll make you a copy of this.
I can't just have it?
What?
I can't just have it?
You should have. I think I had so many.
This is gonna be the easiest one of the night.
You want this one?
No.
You have your notes on.
No, that's this one.
I think you have a crowd here arguing with you.
Correct.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Well, you have a situation such as this, we're gonna go to our attorney. I mean, this isn't really protecting the towns, protecting the cereal landowners. He still eat the nickel.
No, he's gonna eat the nickel. Yes. He may not know it, but he will. Before he, before he gets approved, he will. Oh, you're back. Good. Because the town reviewing of this is gonna be paid by you. I hope you understand that.
The what?
You're, you're gonna be paying for the town attorney to review, review all this stuff.
Okay.
Thank you for saving me taxes.
So, and then he'll contact Rob Howard.
Yeah, I probably won't be able to get a hold of Drescher until Tuesday. Uh, jeez. Somehow I'm gonna have to do it Monday. Maybe I can do it tomorrow morning, first thing.
No.
Hmm?
He doesn't come to work until.
Well, I can email it. Then say, call me. Because I could be in Avon Mass at nine-thirty or so. How long it take to get to Avon Mass?
I have no idea where Avon Mass is.
South of Boston, that's all I know.
Two hours.
Yeah.
Can't get.
I will try, um.
What time is it gonna be there? Nine-thirty?
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna try to email this to Drescher first thing in the morning. And have him give me a call. So I can explain it to him. Hopefully I'll remember by then. No, I will.
So I'll get a hold of Art, have him put the pin in that you want. And then, um, your, the town attorney will contact my attorney.
Right.
And hopefully we can get it all done before the, what meeting?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third of this one.
There's, there's probably gonna be some notes who want changed to reflect all these agreements, but I wanna make sure we know what the agreements are before Art starts changing notes right now.
Okay.
But Art, Art willing to put that pin in, yes.
Can you note when you do that as conditional, part of the condition, so I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
You won't have to come back after that.
All right.
Yeah, you get a conditional approval. Art does it, he gives us a plan. Chip calls me up and usually I swing by and sign it on the way home and.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, thank you.
I just really got tired.
Can we forego the minutes, please?
Please.
Thank you.
Um, this is all the stuff that we did the last time, minus any corrections. Because I guess tonight is the night. I remember that we did the week with non-discriminatory.
Yes, which is still here.
That's what I was gonna say. And I went through some stuff that I wasn't changed.
Chip, I was hoping that you would have gotten this with the minutes.
I think there's something.
Well, I have them, but I.
I think there's something wrong.
I thought we made changes in article nineteen point one point ten. Because I remember that, that Drescher said something about.
Well, you've got Drescher's comments.
This is a right shift.
If, if they were, this is all I have.
Uh, you want the minutes stuff?
Because I, I did not get the minutes.
You send them to us.
For this stuff?
No.
No, I did not. That's why I printed these, because this was all I had.
We did them on a day.
The little organization I have is now completely out the window.
Which is why I said I hope you guys have got this from the changes that we made.
No, they're in the twenty-second, December twenty-second.
I have the minutes right here. Somebody lost their view. I was not here for that meeting.
I have them too.
Did I send them out?
I got them right here in my hand also.
Okay. I'm almost sure we made a change.
We made a couple of changes.
Yeah, so. All right, make sure they're correct and then give this to me so I can change them.
You want the, you want the ones on the minutes now?
I got the minutes right here. Mr. Kirk suggests to remove the bold language in the bottom article, one, nineteen, one, ten. Oh, we should back up. Back up, back up, back up. No, I guess not. So article four, Mr. Drescher had no problem with it. I assume he's just removing vice chair.
Do you have the articles? This doesn't, this isn't the article. These are the changes to the zoning ordinance, but you have the. Naomi is doing that as we speak. But weren't we looking at article one, article two, article three, rather than?
No.
No. That's what happens when it goes on the warrant and the first thing on the, the first thing on the warrant is the budget. And then you vote on all of these things. These are, start with two, three, article two would be, say, definition of whatever. That's where they get numbered. These get, these are numbered the way you worked on them.
Yeah, actually, the first one is just the voting on candidates, and then it goes directly to zoning.
Yeah, and, and that is up in Naomi's office. She's almost got it done, so.
Before here, and you don't have article four.
Right, but I think that is this. Because it's the definition of accessory dwelling unit.
Where's article five?
Well, we don't have an article five. Article four is definitions in the zoning. So.
And I do believe that two things are getting combined here because there's another definition, um.
We don't want the two definitions combined.
The definition of kennels, I think.
Yeah, you combine them.
No.
It's combined.
No, it doesn't get combined with definition for accessory dwelling unit.
As far as voting?
No.
Well, she's already got them combined.
Well, that's silly.
Boy, they're two definitions. She put all definitions under one article.
If you don't change article nineteen point one point ten, we don't care if the, if the accessory dwelling unit gets changed. And if people don't want accessory dwelling unit changed, they're gonna vote against the.
This is the last hurrah. You guys do exactly what you want, and tomorrow morning they'll go upstairs.
First, we gotta figure out what we already.
Exactly the way you say.
No, first we gotta figure out what we already did, and then we only change typos from what we did. So Mr. Fillmore suggested removing in and capitalize and underline accessory dwelling unit, like that. Right?
Yep.
The ones in December twenty-second or the eighth?
December twenty-second.
So you want this as article two on the warrant?
Yes.
And then this becomes article three on the warrant?
No, that is also article two. I want dwelling units, change all in one article, all in one warrant.
All right.
One vote. Change all the dwelling unit stuff. As long as I make sure it's written right.
And this stuff doesn't get printed, you know how they do it, they shorten it.
Right.
Yeah, that we throw away. So this is all one article.
Yes.
The, the definition and the numbers.
Yes.
And the kennel becomes another article.
Yes.
I have that.
Yeah, I got all of this stuff. This goes with this.
Bruce?
Yes.
Nineteen one ten.
And this is gonna become the official backing.
That was this.
Do you agree that the language in the minutes is the correct language and not the language that Chip put on this sheet?
Yes.
Because we deleted the reference to.
HUD.
HUD.
That's correct.
Okay. So this is correct.
So the end reads, so not to contain one or two bedrooms.
Right.
Period.
This is correct. This is correct. This is correct.
Oh, yes.
Um, nineteen point one point ten six one down the bottom.
Yep.
Something fishy there.
Forgot the word spaces.
Yes.
For the third time.
Where are you guys, I'm not...
Nineteen point one point ten point six.
I don't need it. I'll just write the guys like that, the zoning ordinance is...
Just take the S off parking and add the word spaces.
Where is this?
Take the S off parking and add the word spaces.
Okay. Can you keep this?
I'm just gonna say you guys like that, and we made final corrections. Don't need to be taking them in the minute.
What changes is...
I just put that in for this.
Okay, yes, right.
For the minute, that, this is for the minutes.
Correct.
To take this out, right.
So, this is out.
Yes.
So now kennels becomes...
Article three.
Article three.
Right.
And that goes down...
We get rid of this on...
To here.
Right, that's the whole thing.
So this is, we're going kennels. Shall leave a building?
That's...
This is the definition.
Well, that's why I had a Vice Chair suggested capitalizing the word kennel. Mr. Kirk suggested making a lowercase. I didn't know what you meant there. Mr. Kirk sugge, I didn't know what you meant there.
Definition of kennel.
Making, the word A a lowercase.
A building... Or land used.
That's what he meant.
It shall mean a building or land used for commercial boarding.
Oh, you took out "shall mean," or do you wanna put that back in? Kennel is defined as a building...
All we're looking for is consistency with our... Here, in all cases, it says in the, in the article, alterations is capitalized and underlined, colon at the end of it, spaces, then "shall mean" with the S and "shall" capitalized. That's the way we do it here. And so...
That's the way we're doing it.
So this is correct, the way this is here. Five or more dogs, whether for profit or not. This is yours. But excluding a veterinary clinic. Isn't it? Excluding veterinary clinics or clinics or other facilities engaged in the rehabilitation or rescue of dogs.
No. Well, that's not what it says here, I should say.
No, what the, what if we...
Before we change it to the minutes in the last meeting?
But excluding veterinary clinic or similar operation, then that was a period?
It was. Excluding a veterinary clinic?
Similar. That's what, that's what friend Chip has.
Yes.
Under kennels, do you remember what the definition was? Shall mean a building or land use with a commercial boarding or breeding of five or more dogs or other household pets, whether for profit or not, but excluding a veterinarian clinic or similar operation. Was that it?
There is, uh, the previous, you want the previous definition? Or the one we had in there before?
No, I, I wanna know what we decided on the twenty-second and I think that was it. No, we kept the rescue of dogs there.
The only thing that we crossed out was, uh, or other household pets.
In the minutes, it says Vice Chair Fillmore says similar operations is too vague and it was suggested to change it to clinics or other facilities engaged in rehabilitation or rescue of dogs or other household pets.
Right, but later on we decided to take it out.
You didn't put that in the minutes?
Um, if you read after that.
Where?
Uh, it's after, after that top part down, uh...
Oh, Nancy Fillmore?
Yeah, we talked about it more. We decided to delete it.
Just the limiting...
You want to do, uh, or other, or the thing board, uh...
We did strike the other one, the household pets.
I think you made it strictly dogs.
We did.
Okay, so...
I'm just wondering how we did it.
So it's going to read kennel shall mean a building or land use with a commercial boarding or breeding of five or more dogs, whether for profit or not, but excluding veterinarian clinics. What did you, what was the language?
Or similar.
But excluding a veterinary clinic or similar operation.
What about the rehabilitation of rescue dogs? All clinics or other facilities?
That was something we eliminated earlier on, I thought.
What's the difference between a rescue clinic or, oh, there is a difference.
Okay.
Rehabilitation or rescue.
I'm just not sure about that language. Veterinary clinics or clinics or other facility?
Me either.
Nancy, I thought Nancy had us agree that it was excluding a veteran, excluding a veterinary clinic or similar facility.
Yeah, but I don't know, we have the second clinics and the clinics.
No.
No.
Maybe that's a typo. On my part.
Where?
Or clinics.
We're on the definition of kennel.
Shall mean a building or land use for commercial boarding or breeding of five or more dogs, whether for profit or not, but excluding a veterinarian clinic or similar...
Probably veterinarian clinics.
Or other...
Or similar facilities.
Or other facilities, yeah.
Yeah, the extra or, the extra or clinic should be...
Excluding veterinary clinics or similar facilities?
I don't think we...
No?
What if we take Mr. Drescher's words and kinda modify them, so it would read, um, instead of similar operation, or other facilities engaged in the rehabit, rehabilitation of rescue dogs?
That's what we have in here.
Okay.
But I thought that's what Nancy wanted us to take out and we agreed.
No, no, no.
She wanted the other household, household pets.
Household pets. I think, they're just a typo here, they added that or clinics in the middle.
Well, no, that's what Drescher had asked. Drescher had put in here or clinics or other facilities. So why not just take out Drescher's wording, or clinics or...
Where's Drescher's wording?
I, I think we could just take out the or clinics. Clinics or other facilities.
Yeah, we have the veterinaries, veterinarian in here.
No, but he's, he's saying, instead of or, or similar, instead of the or similar, it changes to or clinics or, I'm suggesting, take, drop out the or clinics and just go from or other, whatever it says.
Or other facilities?
Yes.
He says or similar operations too vague.
Yep.
Or similar facilities and you wanna keep in engaged in the rehabilitation of rescue dogs or other household pets?
No, period, after dogs.
Or similar facilities, period. I agree with that.
Other facilities engaged in the rehabilitation or rescue of dogs.
No.
What, what we're trying to do is try to figure out what we did a month ago.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can only, we can't...
Yeah, this is a non-changing document.
I mean, we can fix things that were typos and stuff like that, but that's it. My understanding of this.
I, I agree. You are correct. And we're trying to figure out what we did last month ago.
Oh, according to the minutes, it's just as we were saying, we had crossed out or other house, household pets. So we only change with many, just cross out the second clinics.
My, my thing about that is, one, it's a draft set of minutes and we haven't even accepted these minutes yet, so...
No, this is what we're arguing about.
This is what we're gonna do, based off of these minutes that we haven't even approved.
Not that we're talking about this.
What reference we have at this point?
Sure to go on YouTube or pulling up the audio.
I don't wanna leave rescue in as far as I'm concerned. Because there's a lot of rescue dogs around.
No, we're leaving rescue dogs in there. That's, that's not going on.
Oh, okay. Are you sure?
Yeah, we can take that out.
I, I didn't think it was in there.
Me neither.
Well... Yeah, let's see how that, that add.
If, let's see if we understand what, what this means. Right now it says that a kennel is commercial boarding or breeding of dogs, whether for profit or not, but it excludes a veterinarian clinic. And you wanna add, it also excludes the rehabilitation or rescue of dogs.
Facility engaged in.
Right, right.
I don't think we had that in there.
No.
No, this...
I think we put a period after clinics. Veterinarian clinics.
If you put a period after clinic, that would mean that you could have a rescue dog facility.
Yeah, I don't know.
Unless they don't...
Without having to get a special exception or conditional use.
But, but that would mean that there's something different between commercial boarding or breeding of five or more dogs and a rescue facility.
Well, the, the engaged rehabilitation, we added it, right? Bruce suggested adding it right at the very beginning at the, uh, where I started typing Article four. Bruce suggested adding it right in. Uh, it says Vice Chair Fillmore, uh, says similar operations is too vague and it was suggested to change it to clinics or other facilities engaged rehabilitation or rescue dogs or other household pets, uh, pets rather. I'll tell them rescue dogs got added in.
I know the other household came out.
Yeah, and that was...
And the, and the similar operation was too vague by, by Bill Drescher.
Right.
Right.
So it should read excluding veterinary clinics or similar facilities?
No. Well...
Veterinary clinics or facilities engaged in the rehabilitation or rescue of dogs or other household pets?
Right, I think the, I think the or clinics was just a typo. Whereas veterinary clinics, or clinics or other facilities, I think the or clinics was a typo in there.
Where's, where's, I need your sheet here, 'cause I screwed up copying it.
You don't think I have? This is before that.
Yeah, and that's what I, I need, one of these.
Oh, I don't have any more of those.
Which one's that?
Page six of the minutes.
Oh, I don't have that.
Anybody have page six of minutes?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I do.
And, and after reading what I, that, what I said there at the beginning, the last sentence, first paragraph there, I think all we gotta do is strike out that or clinics, between veterinary clinics and...
I agree. Let's, let me have yours with my name, so I, I'm gonna take it.
You wanna think up, because you can write on it?
Yes.
You might also wanna use your, rather the word other, you know, facilities. 'Cause we, we'd really not need it. Or facilities engaged in.
I wanna give you the word other. Yep. Got it.
That essentially exempts facilities engaged in rehabilitation of rescue dogs out of the...
They cannot get permit, permission.
They don't need permission.
They don't need permission.
They're excluded from the kennel definition.
Correct. They, they cannot go in, um...
Well, that's one of the ways that goes.
In the rural ag zone.
Right.
That's what we're saying.
We're allowing kennels in rural ag. By excluding them, that means they're not allowed.
Kennels are allowed in rural ag.
Veterinarians aren't.
A veterinarian clinic is not, and a rescue clinic is not, or whatever you're calling it.
Yes.
Well, wait a minute. That's unreasonable. I don't have a cl, I mean, I raise rescue, I, I take care of rescue dogs. I know, I...
I'm pretty sure we had a period after that word, right there.
After veterinary clinics. This is what you think we have, right?
Yeah, what are you saying, period?
After veterinarian clinics, periods.
That would mean you could have rescue dogs. If they, if, if the rescue, if rescue dogs means commercial boarding or breeding of five or more. If you have less than five, it doesn't count.
I have five often.
I don't think rescue...
And he would be, are you in the rural ag zone?
Are you selling these dogs?
It also wasn't commercial.
I'm inclined to take care of them, but...
Well, if you, if you're not selling a dog to somebody, how is it commercial?
Well, that's the point.
Whether for profit or not, nevermind.
That, that means if we put it...
I've got a little different interpretation of this. Sounds to be like we're, this is a definition of kennels.
Yes.
So all I was saying here is that a veterinary clinic is not a kennel and a facility engaged in the rehabilitation of rescue dogs is not a kennel.
Doesn't say, doesn't say you can't do your rescue dogs.
It's just a definition.
It's just not, it's saying you're not a kennel.
Right. Doesn't mean it's not allowed.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I don't understand how he could do rescue dogs. He's got five rescue dogs, okay?
Yep.
But it's not a kennel.
If it's not a kennel, then he doesn't come in under the exception that says you can get a kennel, you can have a kennel in this zone.
Frank, are you a foster? Are you fostering these animals?
Uh, sometimes I foster them.
So they're transients?
Either way, if you're not, if you're not, if you're...
But for the most part, that's the idea.
They're all dogs.
But let's assume... But his, what he's doing is not a defined use.
Let's assume that Frank is located next to a neighbor who really values her peace and quiet. And Frank has twenty rescue dogs, or fifteen rescue dogs. He has no license. He complains to Chip. Okay? What is Chip to do?
Say it's perfectly legal.
I get a box of cookies and go over and visit.
Based on that definition, it's not a kennel.
It's not a kennel, so he can have them without any...
But there's no other language in the article dealing with what's allowed in the rural ag zone, which would let him do this. The reason why we're defining kennel is that, because we all agreed you couldn't have a kennel in the, in the ag zone.
Do you license all these dogs? For old pets?
Well, I thought the intent was to have it in the ag zone or the commercial, but not in residential.
Yes.
Or industrial.
We wanted to have kennels in rural ag.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's where you're putting them.
That's correct. But the question is, if somebody doesn't have a kennel, and we're assuming rescue dogs are not a kennel, can rescue dogs go in ag? And the answer is, no. Because ag says you can only have agricultural animals, and rescue dogs are not agricultural animals. Isn't that what we're saying?
Yes, just, just like a certain...
I interpreted you that way.
If you want rescue animals to be allowed in the rural ag zone, then they have to be included.
But if we took it out at the last meeting, you can't put it back in now.
That's correct.
That's correct.
But here's the question. Did we take it out?
Yeah.
You did?
I clearly did right here.
Okay.
This sentence, this last sentence, this paragraph, I need kennels.
Where? Which, which page?
Chairman Fillmore, page five.
Thank you. Vice said similar operations is too vague and it was suggested to change it to clinics or other facilities engaged in the rehabilitation or rescue of dogs. Or other household pets.
Okay, then that has to stay in. So it's going to read excluding veterinary clinics or facilities engaged in the rehabilitation of rehabilitation or rescue of dogs.
I just wanna make a point real quick. We're leasing everything off of draft minutes. If we go in and we accept, and we, we do this, and we try to change the minutes.
I know.
We've now screwed ourselves.
But we shouldn't be changing the minutes. We should only be correcting them.
Exactly, that's the problem. We haven't, we haven't looked at the minutes to approve them yet. But we're basing our potential corrections or no corrections against minutes we haven't approved.
Okay, let's look at the minutes for December twenty-second.
I don't have it. I gave it to them.
Doesn't matter, you weren't there.
Exactly.
It was I.
Right. So Bruce, Neil and I were there. That's who was discussing the whole thing, so...
All in favor? Second? Alright.
No, hang on. No, hang on.
Something we gotta change here.
There's some highlighted things I put in there. I don't remember that.
We'll solve that whole problem right now, maybe.
Lot line adjustment. Someone abstained from the chat?
Frank abstained because Craig had.
Well, you went in.
Oh, that's when we continued the meeting, okay.
Yeah.
So you need to put down a Craig abstain.
I didn't put that in there?
No. RSA clearly tells you have to, you have to say the vote of each member. Some of the stains you have to put in there.
Page two.
So we start at page one?
I don't see anything in page one.
You don't have to.
The first didn't either.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
Play again, hold on.
These are draft notes, I have, what do you know?
Draft, December twenty-second, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, big paragraph in the middle.
Yeah.
Second line down, where horses, where board horses?
Yeah.
Have a, have a barn where board, boarding horses, maybe?
Yeah, where horses are boarded is what it should say.
Okay.
Is that in level two before?
Where horses.
Waterboarded?
I was thinking.
Um, and then the following sentence, Mr. Higgins said.
Where, where horses are boarded, trained, and riding lessons given.
Yep, that worked.
About eight fifteen.
Ready for the next one?
Yeah.
Next, next sentence, Mr. Higgins said that they were in here at one point due to there was a question.
All right.
Is, is that right?
No.
Just why don't you say due to a question?
Okay.
As to whether. Strike out, third line down.
The next line under board horses.
It starts one point, do, strike out, to, there was.
That same paragraph, third line down.
All right. What do you want me to think? I found it, but what?
It should read one point, due to a question, strike out there was.
Go down a couple more lines.
He wasn't even here.
Nobody reads these.
I do read, yes.
Okay.
Part of my job.
He, he apparently got an A in English in high school.
No, actually I didn't. That's the sad part. Uh, line starts, asked if they were taking an exist, existing horse barn and put it in, put it in a, put in a different kind of business.
And it should say putting it in. Putting it.
And are putting in a.
And instead of just existing horse barn, you should put existing. Because it wasn't just a horse barn, it was a horse barn for their personal use.
This was supposed to be easy.
Stable.
So you may wanna put.
Existing personal horse barn?
Personal use horse barn or something. Yeah.
It's never.
Doesn't matter what was in it, right?
No. You can cross out horse.
You have a page full of nits.
Existing personal barn?
Yes.
Yes, but what we're going to, as a result of John's efforts, criticize them as you may, we're gonna put out a better product. We're gonna be proud of our minutes.
I was just thinking.
Second to last line, Wendy Rice from the assessing, not accessing department.
A, A S S E S S.
Oh, wow, I don't.
Maybe it is an accessing department.
It could be.
You know that. It's accessing your personal funds.
That's all I have on that page.
I got it. Back to that, where was that personal barn thing?
Yep.
Strike out different kind of business and put in commercial business?
That makes sense.
And putting in a commercial business.
Put in a commercial business.
Putting in, taking an existing horse barn and putting in a commercial business.
Are we talking about a different kind of business or a horse?
Not the horse business. Oh. There was a barn before, I mean, they had horses in it, but we didn't care. It was just their own personal barn.
Sort of.
Okay.
I'm done on page one.
You're done on?
Page one.
Well, we have eight more pleasures.
At least two more, page two.
When you get to the bottom, let me know.
Okay.
Third line up, fourth line up.
Fourth line down from the top, very last, starting Mr. Kirk suggested that if a lot, or if lot two point, two, three, five point one is sold, then the paddock will need to be moved, should be a note on the plan. So I highlighted that. Something didn't sit right with me the way it's written.
Why don't we say, is sold, then the, and the paddock will need, there should be a note on the plan. No, no, that's wrong.
How about and between moved and should? It needs to be moved and should be.
Why don't we do the, is sold, comma.
You said it.
Then quote, after, after the word then, put quotation marks. Before the, and the paddock will need to be moved, quotes after moved, and continue the sentence. Should be a note on the plan.
So come after sold and then quotes after the paddock. Quotes, in the quotes is the paddock should be moved?
Then quote, the paddock will need to be moved, unquote. That's the, the language.
Okay.
That needs to be placed on the plan.
Speaking of nits, it's end quote, not unquote.
Same thing on the keyboard.
Unquote.
I, I think he's, of the two of us, he's the niddier.
I think so, too. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get the Holy Grail on like a.
I was gonna wear my blue sweater tonight.
The quote is after then.
Okay, that's what I have. I just wanted to make sure I put it right.
Otherwise, John would have us redo the minutes.
No, I can't.
No, that's the theory.
All right, uh, last paragraph.
Oh, the word is motion passed. Maybe it's the notion passed.
We had a notion.
We had a notion, oh, motion. Last paragraph, fifth line up from the bottom.
It's the fourth one.
Fourth line, I can't count.
Does that, does that's application?
Yes.
Yes, application, but has, not talked to them. Talk with them.
He asked sent.
I said he asked. That doesn't make any sense. He said it, though.
Has, has, cross out asked, put has.
Yes.
Where are you, where are you, Bruce?
Fifth line up, Mr., near the end, Mr. Blaisdell said, he has, he has sent in an application, but has not talked to them, talked with them.
All right.
I was eating supper and reading at the same time, though, and you also, you gotta give me a little break.
All right, where are you at, John?
Uh, five lines above, starting Chairman Francisco asked.
Really? Uh, if he said the easement, is that where you're at?
Yep.
Okay.
If the easement was undescribed, what's undescribed?
Hey, there's an easement through there. That's undescribed.
Okay. All right, I just, I, I highlight that because I'd never heard that term, and I wasn't sure what, how it fit into here, so.
It wasn't there.
But it's there, it's not described where.
In order to, in order to have an easement, you have to have a description of the property over which the easement.
Okay. I was more looking for a definition, a definition of what that was.
Anything else on page three or two?
Yeah, well, yeah, Mr. Blaisdell said he was going to make it a reserved cemetery. Do we have to make reservations how early?
No, it's call ahead seating.
No, it's call ahead sleeping.
I stopped my corrections after that, because, just because.
Oh, gosh.
What was I trying to put there?
What's their title? That's what I was trying to figure.
Cemetery trustees, correct.
I have no idea what I was trying to put there.
He was gonna make a reserved cemetery with the right to get to it. So he got right to make reservations to get to the cemetery. We gotta change that.
Yeah, I don't remember what I was trying to put there.
Preserve, maybe?
No, uh.
Well, it was a, it was a reservation in the deed, so.
I don't know what I was trying to put there, Bruce. And I don't remember what he said.
Private cemetery. Instead of make, cross out make, put show.
Show it as.
Yeah.
As a reserved cemetery? Or maybe preserved, maybe is what I meant. Does preserve sound better?
No.
I guess cross, reserved right out. Show it as a cemetery.
How about we just take, take the whole sentence, Chairman Francisco asked, take that whole sentence right out of there. No. I was asking about this easement was undescribed.
He was gonna show it as a cemetery with the.
Said he was going to make it a reserved cemetery.
Right to get to it.
Oh, I figured you were just scratching the line.
Show it as a cemetery.
The right away to get to it.
I don't understand what's wrong with it as it's written.
What's a reserved cemetery? Mr. Blaisdell said he's going to make it a reserved cemetery.
If that's what he said, then it's up to him. We're recording it correctly.
He didn't say that.
He didn't say that?
No.
The only way to prove it is pull up the tape.
Is there any other word that would describe cemetery?
No, actually, he may have said that.
It's perfect.
Because the deed reserved the cemetery. There was a reservation for the cemetery, so he could have said this.
Let's leave it.
Moving, moving right along.
Moving right along, page three. He may have said that, Bruce. If the date, if the deed said excepting or reserving of.
I didn't have anything in three.
Okay, on page, uh, item, Roman rule number four, sight, plan, review, Thomas Tremblay, DBA, Caldwell, Banker.
I know that.
One paragraph above that, Vice Chairman Fillmore made an motion to continue application to January twenty-sixth to notify the cemetery trustees. This way it should be written. Not to notify to the cemetery of trustees.
I think I do.
To and of. That's it.
Now we're at article number, we're on page four. Tina, are you okay, or you're missing the of?
All right, there's two twos in there. Uh-oh.
Roman number five, need to put down who abstained.
Wait, hang on, hang on a second.
Oh, yeah, I abstained.
On your, to notify the cemetery of trustees.
Repeat what you said about the cemetery trustees, she didn't get it. To notify, strike the word.
To.
To, and the cemetery, and strike the word of.
Oh, is it cemetery trustees?
Yes.
Okay, so I was trying to.
That's what she had there.
She missed, she, she didn't get it that time.
Same sentence, have offer be shown or noted, maybe, or instead of note? Just continuing on that same sentence.
Or noted?
I think it's supposed to be noted.
Yes.
You said it was Craig that abstained.
Yes, on the.
John, if you ever leave your job, you can become an editor for a book.
No, thank you.
Anything else on page four?
I hope not.
Nope.
Good.
And then the rest are the, the articles, so.
I think we're okay through article, what's now two, you said just?
Well, let's stick with page numbers for this.
I think we're okay on, right?
Well, I think there's a correction to be made at ninth, at the second line from the bottom, nineteen, one, ten, six.
Yeah, we can't get the spaces.
Two parking spaces.
Right.
Instead of two parkings. Page five. After, I don't know, before, Article thirty-four point, eleven point one. Somehow I got a.
They'll put it right in here.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, put it before Mr. Kirk.
Before Mr. Kirk, you should say Attorney Drescher suggested the changes were not necessary.
Yes. That explains why Mr. Kirk said he was the paper eliminating.
Wise move.
Thank you.
By Mr. Kirk.
She got this.
Hey.
I hope.
On the bottom of page five, under kennel.
Hopefully you have that.
Shall mean? Uh, okay.
Yeah, I got that one when we were on it.
I hope so.
Now, before we get into this kenneling any further, let's go right down to Nancy Fillmore said.
Yes. Third line up. That's not my copy.
You can write this.
Because third line up, Mrs. Fillmore suggested, instead of limiting, it should be eliminating.
And after eliminating, put quotation marks around or other household pets.
Is it by quotes around or other household pets?
Right. Before or, and after pets.
Okay.
Begin quote, end quote.
Thank you, begin quote.
I learned that today.
That usually goes hand in hand with it regardless.
Okay. You all said, Bruce? No other changes?
Yeah, but I think that whole sent, that whole little section there.
Which section?
Which section?
That whole.
Nancy Fillmore?
Yeah, that whole paragraph about it. I think we wanna put that before the kennel discussion, don't we? I mean, because we consider her testimony in our kennel discussion talks. We didn't.
Yeah, but this.
We listed her testimony after the kennel discussion talks.
But everything above that is kennels related. It's all, it's all about kennels.
But then.
Seventeen, three, twelve, kennels by conditional use permit, and twelve, one, and two are more about that.
But.
It's not the definition, you're right.
No, no, but during that discussion is, if, when we decided to strike the or other household pets part, and quote these minutes, we struck the other household pets part before that discussion even took place.
I see what you're saying.
We're so smart. We knew what she was gonna say. Maybe you did, because you're married to her. I had no clue.
You know what I mean?
Yes. The chicken, the chicken and the egg thing.
Yeah.
So you think this should, I'm on page five now. You think the Nancy Fillmore paragraph from page six going on to page seven should go under, on page five, just above Article four?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But when it was said.
It was said later.
But then we went back and struck out.
Right. Then we changed her definition.
Right.
So let's, I, I agree with you.
That gives us some logic on how we, why we change the definition like we did.
More legwork on other animals.
I read that about three times.
Yeah, but that's, that's Bruce's humor.
Yes. More legwork on other animals. He says, Bruce said that later on. Yeah, let's move Nancy's conversation up there.
I move the, I move we accept the minutes as amended. The minutes of the December twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, um, as corrected. You got more?
One more.
I withdraw my motion.
But I can still work.
Well, I could just, we have discussion. Anyway, um, can we please put the last page, very end of it, can we put what time we adjourned?
Go.
You expect me to remember that time we adjourned?
I do, eight thirty.
It was not late.
It was eight thirty.
Yeah.
Because you, you, you said.
Just for continuity, don't you do it on others?
And you're also gonna have to put the day.
Starting date, ending date?
Well, the date's at the top of the first page.
We, we used to do that all the time, Tom.
Do I already do another?
I don't gonna throw those away. I usually do, but I'm not gonna.
No, but I need, I need these pages because this is.
Oh, yeah, I did on the eighth.
This is what we're doing.
Yeah, I did on the eighth.
Yeah, just continually.
Four.
Five and six.
Five. Okay. Because I gotta give these to Tina.
I didn't, I didn't on the second either.
No, I, I got a clean copy of six, so I just erase this.
You need to give them to me.
No, I didn't.
Excuse me to you.
Are you correcting our minutes?
No, I got two copies of it.
Okay.
We're now going back to the, oh, sorry.
Kennels.
I, I move the minutes of the twenty, twenty-second of December be approved as corrected.
I'll second that.
Discussion. John? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Okay.
Okay. Now going back to.
The, the zoning.
The zoning, article four, the definition of kennel, I think this is where we are. Kennel shall mean a building or land used for the commercial boarding or breeding of five or more dogs, whether for profit or not, but excluding veterinary clinics or facilities engaged in the rehabilitation or rescue of dogs.
Correct.
Okay.
I agree.
Moving on.
You did, you did get that, right, ma'am?
I, I've got it down here. And Bruce's, uh, chip is taken.
Get his chip.
Take it, yeah.
This is Neil.
The rest of it, I think, is correct.
Well, what exactly, I understand that the definition is gonna be up for a vote. What about this kennel by conditional use permit, is that gonna be part of this?
That's part of, um, what will be.
Article three.
Article three.
Really, huh, but I mean, I almost think you might want to make it out of a four because I think it, you know, what, it's very hard to understand. Yeah, very hard to understand. Well, I don't, kennels by conditional use permit, oh. Who needs this conditional use permit?
Anybody who wants to have a kennel in the rural agricultural zone.
In the rural agricultural zone.
It's the only place where kennels are being specifically allowed.
Alright, well.
And then they will be allowed in.
Therefore, they're allowed in commercial and industrial.
Correct.
Well, here's the problem. It would be impossible to meet these conditions, so you're never gonna get one because you can hear a dog bark for half a mile with ease, even a dog that isn't too loud. So, if you start, if, if we have to come up, if somebody comes in, uh, let, let me see, let's see. Not resolved in unreasonable, well, what's unreasonable, noise levels at the project. Apparent property line. Uh, which property, I guess all the property lines, but, uh, will not resolve any degradation, degradation.
Degradation.
The quality of the groundwater will have no significant negative impact on a budding doting project. I mean, if the dog goes poos in a brook, I suppose that, I mean, I just think that.
If you have twenty dogs crapping in the brook, yeah, you got a problem.
Well, I think the noise levels are one, what's a, how do you, right now, as I understand.
Put them in a building and insulate it, put them in a building and insulate it.
If you've got a commercial kennel.
Well, I'm not saying that's a bad, bad plan, but.
Or by a big property.
Noise levels are always an issue, it seems like, because even in, in a building, you're privately owned, but it seems to me, and, and I make, somewhere, because these issues come up, somebody says, well, the dog's barking, I call up the dog officer. Seems to me they had like a half hour, the dog barks for more than a half hour, there's a, uh, this constitutes.
Nuisance.
A nuisance, is that a fact, does anybody know?
Not in the town aware.
Not in the town aware.
The only time, uh, the animal control officer can do anything about a barking dog is if it's outdoors. If the dog is indoors, then there's nothing that the ACO can do.
You know, if the dog walks out and barks twice and walks in, I hear the dog barking.
Well, that's why we have a noise committee to address all of these issues.
Yes, John.
Yep.
They did not, nothing on noise.
Not this meeting.
So this half hour thing I heard, is somebody's fabrication.
Yeah, yeah. And the noise levels are arbitrary, you know, some people are bothered by dogs barking, some people are not.
Right, but probably people that have dogs are less bothered by other people's dogs.
Oh, well, when this whole conversation started, uh, it was over some actual kennels that we had had problems with in residential zones. And we went round and round about all these things that we wanted to define and how to do this and what ought to be done as far as kennels, and I said, you know, you're addressing all the wrong issues, it's very nice that you've written a rule, but the problem was the barking dogs. And they said, there's a noise committee. And the noise committee said, we're not gonna address that, so have a nice day.
Moving on.
You couldn't have a kennel in anything but the rural ag.
And the commercial.
And the commercial.
And industrial.
And the industrial.
Not in the residential or the village.
Certainly not in the Mount Dearborn overage district.
Theory being that five acres of dog barking or ten acres of dog barking is not as bad as two acres of dog barking.
And the reason why we're doing it with a conditional use permit, Chuck, is that we, the plant board has a little more latitude in working with the applicant to try to.
Avoid the problem.
Create something that avoids the problem, if you try to document how to avoid a problem completely, you end up with a hundred page document that nobody can understand.
I just think what you have here is, we should wash you a pass, but I'm gonna say this, I think you might be better off separating those articles. The, the, the kennel definition, I guess we're gonna call it, is one thing, might not create too much heartburn, but.
But if we don't, if we don't have the second part of the article, the kennel is not allowed anywhere in town. Recycle.
Don't throw anything away.
In the RE zone, because article seventeen is the RE.
Doesn't say that?
That article seventeen itself is the.
Was the same RE?
Because seventeen is the RE.
Oh, I see, seventeen, so you're, you're already, okay, alright.
Can't you have an article, uh, conditional on the passage of another article, though?
If you have that, why don't you put them in one art? Same net result.
Well, no, they can approve the definition of the kennel and say, no, on seventeen.
What, what do they approve seventeen and don't approve the definition?
Then, then it wouldn't happen at all.
Why not? They just passed article seventeen, it happened.
Not if you put it in their conditional on.
There's an article seventeen.
Yeah.
Any, any kennel in rural ag needs a conditional use permit.
That's correct.
Yes.
Well, and, and it's really a package. I think the board, the board would not like to see one part pass and the other not pass because it wouldn't work.
Either way.
Either, exactly, you have to have both. Even though they're in different sections of the zoning ordinance.
Kennel is more than four dogs.
Five or more.
Five or more.
Five or more.
Yep. You've got four, you're fine.
And that's, that's consistent with what the state law calls a kennel. That's why we changed it from four, five.
These are all, I mean, I'm certainly aware of.
It's getting late, Tom.
We need to adjourn because Tom's starting in again. Okay, I, I think we're finished.
Let me ask, I still want to ask another question.
You're gonna give me the changes?
If a person in the, uh, in the other districts, like, oh, no, that would just be in the, uh.
Residential?
Residential, had ten rescue dogs, no problem, right, unless they bark or something, I don't know, they're loud.
Correctly, because they're not, they're not a kennel.
That's right.
What is this? Based on the definition, based on definition in four, if they, what was it?
Rehabilitation or rescue of dogs is, 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 uh, not, not, is excluded.
So at that point.
All rescue dogs you wanted it.
Just like you could have a vet, it may not count.
Correct.
Right, because we don't want vets in rural ag.
In that language, we put it there on the recommendation.
That's why it was there.
Why?
Vets should be in the commercial.
The, the point is that while we're excluding.
That's why.
Vets and rescues, vets and rescues are not allowed in district, in, in the rural ag or in any other except commercial and perhaps industrial. There's no provision for them in the resi, in the residential zone.
But there's nothing restricting them.
But the way we, the way our zoning.
Zoning is exclusionary.
You're allowed to do whatever it is we, you're allowed to do, and you can't do something else.
Just because it's not mentioned doesn't mean you can do it.
Right.
If it's mentioned, you can do it, if it's not mentioned, you can't. We had an issue with a certain asphalt plant.
We don't want to see that fly.
Are we ready to adjourn, Mr. Chair? Are we ready?
We did some minutes tonight.
You do have the whole thing figured out about how things are getting grouped together, three articles, okay.
Yeah. One will be that first definition. Two is the next cluster, and then three is kennels and conditional use.
What was the cluster? Accessory dwelling?
Cluster flop.
Well, you had two. Right, accessory apartment and kennels.
No, you have the nineteen, uh, one. That would be two, kennels would be three.
Actually, wasn't there something, signs too?
No.
No, we got rid of that. No. Article four was the.
Yeah, I wrote it on one of your things here.
Yeah, well, God knows where that is by now.
Happened to that.
It's in there.
Maybe it's in.
It's in there. No, we had the definition for accessory dwelling units, and we had article nineteen, which was defining, which should be grouped together.
That's right.
Then we had article definition for kennels and the kennel thing, which should be grouped together.
So accessory is a.
So that's two.
That's it.
Alright, no problem.
Okay. You're sure?
Ichy and me.
Okay, so.
Yeah, throw that in there too, so I don't have to do it in the morning, put this in your take home file.
That's why it's out there.